Morning.
Hi, good morning.
Is Lisa not joining us today?
She is not.
Oh, okay.
I am just finding out now, apparently Lisa is not joining us.
Okay.
And Sabrina, Sabrina is of course joining us, but she is doing so from her home office.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay. Do we have a minute or so? Yeah, fine, that's just. No, we're not. No, this is our full complement. We're ready to go and when you guys give me the word, we'll go. Okay. Good morning. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that still limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Bruce Mullack. Panel members this morning are Nimrod Solomon, Erin Cheng, and Joanne Hayes. This will be a virtual public hearing. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx. Anyone, this will be moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by computer, phone, or tablet. All participants will automatically be muted upon entry. When his or her item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Registered participant speakers will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, 1990 is amended. This meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variations from the provisions of the zoning bylaw which apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consents to sever property in order to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wishes to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on a particular application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email only. You may not agree with the decision of the committee. Decisions may be appealed to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Procedure. I will call each item in the order that it is listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if requested by the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. And I will comment to you when you are reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will then proceed first and may be asked to make a presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, in order to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support of or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after the speaker has finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will have an opportunity to rebut, but only those issues that were raised by the speakers. And that will mark the end of discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have the minutes been confirmed by members?
Through you, Mr. Chair. March 23 hearing. The minutes are ready for that hearing.
Thank you very much. Okay. Then I'll look to the panel members for a motion to confirm those minutes. Ms. Hayes, is there a second? It is seconded, Mr. Solomon. So moved and seconded to approve the minutes from March 23. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And that motion is carried by unanimous vote. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral on items this morning?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Item number 11, 173 Chaplin Crescent. There is a request to defer. However, the agent is currently presenting an application with panel A, so we'll just wait to deal with that item when it comes up.
That'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, just a question to panel and staff. Are there any declarations of interest by panel or staff? Hearing none. Let me ask this question. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed on this morning's agenda?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, not this morning.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we move to our morning agenda. And on the first application, we are dealing with 282 Arlington Avenue. The materials which the committee has before it are the following. Committee of Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans, Elevations, those materials submitted by the applicant. There's a cover letter from the applicant from November. There are site statistics from the applicant received November. And there is a commenting report from Urban Forestry received March 23. Moderator, do we have one person standing by to speak on this in opposition?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is not in the attendance, so I'm currently trying to give her a call.
Okay.
But it doesn't seem to go through.
Let's just put that one to the side then, and we'll come back to it as you continue to make contact. That's the agent or the applicant that you're trying to contact. Okay. So we'll just set that aside. And return to it. Application number two deals with 42 Duson Street. On this application, committee has before it submitted materials, cover letter from Acadia Design, February, cover letter from the agent, March 23. We have email correspondence from City Planning. There are two letters from Toronto Building regarding the legal non-conforming use. And there is a staff report from Community Planning dated March 22. We have a letter from councillor Anabailau recommending conditional approval. And there is support correspondence from 27 Delaware, 86 Duson, 121 Concord, 105 Concord, 42 C Duson. There is opposition correspondence. In total, 34 correspondences from the owners of 70 Concord and 110 Concord, 86, 30 Duson, 94 Gladstone, 98 Gladstone, 84 Concord, 46 and 69 Duson, 78, 91, 98, 108, 168, and 200 Concord, 28, 36, 43, 44 and 71 Duson. Also from in opposition, 78, 85, 92, 94, 102, 103, and 120 Concord. From 101 Gladstone, from 231 Fort York Boulevard, from 18 Beaconsfield, 14 Stone House, and received quite recently from 42 C Duson and 44 Duson. Plus, there are 28 form letters in opposition signed by owners and occupants at 26, 32, 43, 50 Duson, 62 Delaware, 74, 81, 84, 89, 173, 175, 192, 196, 197, 198, and 199 Concord, and 556, 560, and 562 Ossington. And there's one form letter in opposition from 50 Duson. So. Okay, then. Moderator, do we have the agent with us?
Yep. Mr. Flett, you've been unmuted.
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
My name is Ian. May I begin, or would you like a moment, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you have five minutes to, let me check with the moderator here. Yes, you all have five minutes. We do ask you to make a presentation on your application, and your five minutes begin now. Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, committee members. My name is Ian Flett, and I'm the lawyer for 42 Duson Incorporated, which is the applicant in respect of this matter. If you've read over some of the correspondence, you will have noted that this is a little different from what the Committee of Adjustment very often hears, because we're seeking permissions pursuant to Section 45.2 of the Planning Act. And so not minor variances, but this is to effectively seek further uses at 42 Duson beyond what is already permitted as part of their legal non-conforming use at that site. The current legal non-conforming use is for a small retail grocery store. And in effect, what 42 Duson Incorporated would like to permit its tenant to do is to install an espresso machine and an oven to serve coffee drinks, like espressos and cappuccinos, and croissants, and the things that are quite popular in Toronto, to those who are coming to the store. As you know, under Section 45.2, we need to establish for you that there are legal non-conforming uses already on the site, and that this is a similar use to what is currently, what is the current use. The legal non-conforming use was recognized by the Toronto Building Department. This is not binding on you. You can come to your own determination. But you'll notice that there's a fair degree of opposition and a lot of conversation respected this matter. And I will be submitting to you that the two sources of information that provide you with the least biased, or at least the most disinterested views, are from Toronto Buildings and Community Planning. And so Toronto Building did ask for the evidence supporting the legal non-conforming use and remains satisfied to this day that there is legal non-conforming use at the site for a small grocery and retail store. Now, we understood that one of the requests made of us as the applicant was to frame our request for greater uses within a definition that currently exists in the zoning bylaw. And so that's why you see the words "takeout eating establishment." We'd actually worked with different language, and it would be my legal submission that we could use different language. But it appeared that staff was most comfortable with us using a definition coming from the zoning bylaw, which is why you see "takeout eating establishment" as the, for the permission. But recognizing that it's not the intention in any way for there to be a restaurant or for there to be a Burger King, or McDonald's, or a taco stand there, and that there were concerns about what kind of impacts that could have, we worked with Community Planning to set up conditions. And those three conditions are that the area for this use would be limited to 20 square meters. That's about 250 square, 215 square feet. I looked this up. The average commercial kitchen is 1,000 square feet. So this is a very small area of the building that would be allowed, of the first floor that would be allowed for this use. The next one is that there should be no installation of a fryer, or a smoker, or a grill, or similar equipment. And this gives bylaw officers the discretion to say, here's the equipment that will cause negative impacts, and they are not allowed at this property. And finally, to limit the hours of operation between 7:00 and 9:00. I'll also say that there was a candid discussion as to whether or not we might be able to put a condition that would restrict the service of alcohol at the site, recognizing that many people were concerned that there could be a bar there. And we do agree with what came back from the city of Community Planning, was that the regulation of the sale of alcohol is a matter for the AGCO and not for the city. And for those of us who have done license appeal tribunal hearings, I have noted that there's been a consistent threat at the city not to get into the world of enforcing alcohol sales. And that's why you don't see any reference to alcohol in the current zoning bylaw. Unfortunately, as I reviewed all of the opponent correspondence, which I take all of it at face value, there is a significant misperception that the intention here is for something more than what we are asking for. The opponents are fighting an applicant that is not, are fighting an application that is not before you. This is an application that is highly circumspect and is not a stepping stone to a bigger restaurant, or not a stepping stone to a bar. It is simply to be able to serve customers coffee drinks and croissants. If there was any other way to firm this up, we would have done it.
I'll leave those as. I'll ask you to make your final comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll leave those as my submissions for the moment, and will respond to what I hear from those who may speak after me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the committee.
Thank you. Okay, let's go then to our first, our first registered speaker.
Mr. Chairman, are we able to ask questions now of the agent?
If you would like to, yes, you may. Go ahead.
Sure. I have a few questions. First is, is there a reason that the current retail store can't bring in packaged or baked goods already and sell them there? Why do they have to bake them on-site?
That's a good question, Mr. Solomon. They certainly can do that, and they currently are selling. So it was interesting. At one point, there was a discussion with building, what can we do? Currently, members of the public can walk into the store and serve themselves a coffee from a carafe of prepared coffee. And yes, they could get warmed baked goods from the site. And there's nothing that would prevent that as an option. If the committee recommended the drafting of a condition that would go to that effect, we could work with it. Now, I would, on the other hand, recognize that there is popularity in freshly baked goods. And freshly baked goods baked on-site are not uncommon in the city. But I do recognize your question and the practical implications.
And a number of the letters that we have received of opponents have indicated that the applicant in the past has indicated that they were seeking to have a a bar in an outdoor patio. Is that the same owner of the site?
The owner has been the same since 2018. And there's been, there have been many miscommunications, misunderstandings as to what was sought at this site. I, with all due respect, I believe that the problem was that Boxcar Social was one of the first tenants. And the tenant was solely authorized to open a retail store. Boxcar Social is also well-known because it does operate bars in other parts of the city. And so I believe an inference was made by neighbors that Boxcar Social had the intention of ultimately opening a bar. I would say this about the prospect of opening a bar, and I say this as a lawyer who's represented community groups against licenses for the sale of alcohol at the License Appeal Tribunal. If there's one bit of case law that comes out of License Appeal Tribunal cases, it's that you will almost never be granted a license across the street from a school. So there is never an intention, and it would be, I think, almost a legal impossibility to obtain a license to sell alcohol. And to be clear, we did entertain with staff the possibility of putting a condition in that would prevent the sale of alcohol, but as I mentioned in my opening statement, staff feel that that's an overlapping jurisdiction. They don't want bylaw officers enforcing liquor sales when the AGCO does it with its enforcement partners, including TPS and the OPP.
Thank you. Mr. Cheng, your question?
Right. Hi. As soon as we have a chance to ask a question, I just want to ask quickly. Have you thought about, it's basically following Imon's question about selling prepackaged food to, you know, being able to cook food from scratch? And have you or your client thought about the waste management? From my understanding, if you're prepackaging food, there should be much less food waste. Do you have like a waste storage prepared on the site plan, on the drawings that you can identify?
No, we have not explicitly dealt with the question of waste. I would indicate that there are storage, there are areas on the plans that you'll see that are set aside for storage. And so I wouldn't have foreseen that the waste generated from from the operation of a cafe would have been explicitly problematic. But it would be my inference from looking at the plans and from an experienced operator like Finch Store that this is something that they would not have seen as an issue and something that they would see as easily solved. But thank you for your question, and I'm sorry, I can't point you to a specific, a specific measure for the waste.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on now. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah. Last question. I'm trying to understand how zoning is going to regulate the types of cooking equipment in the proposed, you know, establishment. And to me, it's, I do have some issues of how is this going to be regulated and monitored, that there be no types of certain kinds of baking or cooking equipment?
No, I understand that. So first, just as a reminder, that these conditions are brought to you jointly between ourselves and Community Planning, and having considered and discussed them. The idea was to identify equipment that is known to cause, and throughout the city is recognized, to cause problems and impacts within a neighborhood. So very often, we do hear complaints in respect of smokers. We hear complaints in respect of fryers and grilling equipment, where you have those large, high-capacity vents carrying the smoke, carrying the heat out into, let's say, the public air, the air in the neighborhood. Those same complaints, we can't, are not, are not generated when it comes to baked goods. And so we were comfortable identifying the opportunity for baked goods to be there, and of course, warming prepared goods. I would say, Mr. Solomon, is that if it is something, and I have discussed this with my client, if it is something that would help assuage the committee's concern, we could look at amending variance to, or I'm sorry, condition to, to just provide for the warming of prepared goods, if that seems to be something that would get us over the hump for the committee. But my sense is that we really were trying to target those where, you know, the big highlight cases where we hear about issues where the smokers, the grills, the fryers are causing problems. And the similar equipment also allows for a zoning bylaw officer the interpretation, right, and the discretion to say, this other piece of equipment is like those others and also prohibited.
Okay, let's move on now. We have, we have five or six speakers registered standing by. So let's go to the first speaker who is standing by, please. Moderator?
Farah, you've been unmuted on your cellphone.
Good morning. If you'd join us, please, by stating your name.
Farah, maybe you can try to unmute yourself on your own device, or...
Can you hear me now?
Now we do. Yeah, you're loud and clear.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. I am Farah Raman. I am on 70 Concord Avenue. I'm an architect with extensive background in urban planning. I've been asked to speak on behalf of all the neighbors that are opposed to this change, including myself. You have probably noted, there are 64 letters of objection filed with the committee. The vast majority of neighbors are absolutely opposed to expanding the permitted use of this property. To that, I would refer you to map of objectors, submission number 29B. In addition to that, our councillor and deputy mayor has also filed an objection. The, I think it was mentioned earlier, she did not say it's a conditional approval. She actually objected, and at the very least, it should be a conditional approval, is what she said. I think we should address the elephant in the room. This application is for a takeout restaurant without limit, and that could be any kind of restaurant, from Pizzeria, Subway sandwiches, Rotisserie Chicken, whatever they choose in the future. This is not an application to add coffee service, sandwiches, and an oven just to warm up few muffins. This service already exists, as you heard earlier from the speaker before me. There is a huge difference between a neighborhood convenience store and a takeout restaurant. A convenience store coexists with the community, as this store has done for 70 years. In contrast, a takeout restaurant is an invasion into the community with people from all over, increased traffic into the neighborhood, delivery service, Uber Eats, and so on. This is a residential street, and a takeout restaurant is not compatible with it. There is also no need to make this permanent zoning change, because we all live within close walking distance of hundreds of established restaurants, bars, coffee shops. Community planning has issued a report, and we all believe that we were not properly consulted. We, the community, were not properly consulted. We met with planning on February the 16th and gave a very comprehensive presentation about the adverse impact, especially Dusen traffic, which is already really bad. A follow-up email was also sent. We did not even receive a courtesy response. We are designated as a neighborhood in the official plan and also mentioned in the community report. The official plan for neighborhood very clearly states in section 4.3 that a new use like this application is only permitted in a neighborhood if, number one, it's on a major road. Dusen is not a major road. Number two, a new use is supposed to go through a zoning amendment, not a committee of adjustment. Number three, they should not adversely, you know, affect the neighborhood, which this application does. There is no doubt, if this change is for a permit like a takeout restaurant, it will increase traffic, noise, and other things. The more popular the restaurant becomes, greater the traffic. You do the math. Furthermore, we are a residential zone and eating establishments are not permitted. Permitting this change of use will be in violation of our zoning rights. This application should have been declined by the community planning without dragging us all through this emotional roller coaster. The committee mentioned in their report that the councillor arranged a meeting with the developer and residents, but omitted the list of concerns of the residents discussed at this meeting.
I shall ask you to make, I shall ask you to make your final comment now, please.
The committee did not even note that the deputy mayor and councillor had objected to this. And in discussion of the friar and all this, who is going to regulate this? Creating a problem and then trying to solve it is not the way to go. The property is zoned residential and has been for 70 years. The proposed change is a permanent change and cannot be allowed.
Your time is now up.
We laid out in detail here today in our correspondence with you, the reasons why the...
Your time is now up. Thank you. Moderator, let's move along to, please. First of all, questions panel for this speaker? Any questions for this speaker? No. Let's move along to the next registered speaker standing by.
John, you've been unmuted on your cellphone.
Good morning.
Maybe you can try to unmute yourself on your own device and... John Adams, can you hear us? So through you, Mr. Chair, I actually tried to call him because he was not in attendance. I think we might have gone straight to voicemail, so.
Let's go to the next speaker then.
Eduardo, you've been unmuted.
Hi. My name is Eduardo de Conca. I live at 102 Concord Avenue, less than half a block from 42 Dusen. First of all, I want to thank you for my opportunity to express my concerns about this proposed change. I've been here for more than 25 years, and it was quite convenient to have the grocery store so close to home. And the proposed changes would imply, and I guess there is no doubt, more traffic. By the way, could you please pull up the pictures I sent us?
Just hang on a second, Eduardo, and we'll put up some materials. Yes, just hang on for a moment.
It's number 22.
Are these the photos you're referring to?
Yeah. Let me know when I can continue.
Go ahead now. Okay, there's the photos, Eduardo, and now we, go ahead, please.
Could you go to the bottom of the pictures, the last pictures? Thank you. There is no doubt that takeout establishment will bring more traffic for delivery, for pickup. And also, they could probably put some tables and have people coming from outside our community to have lunch, dinner, whatever. And as you can see in these pictures, there is no parking on the north side of Dusen. There's limited parking on the south side of Dusen because of school. South of Dusen on Concord Avenue, limited parking because of the school. That's what is shown in these pictures. Now, if you go up again, please, to the other pictures. Further up, please. Thank you. Right there. This is Concord Avenue. The minivan there, that's how we have to park. That minivan is my car. And it's not only once. You can see there are different cars in front and in the rear of my car at different times. If you go farther up, you can see many times the state of parking. More cars here would be a disaster. We cannot allow to have any more cars. And a takeout establishment would increase traffic. We cannot put up with that. It's too much. Now, that's one of the problems I have. The other problem is the dishonesty of Mr. Keshu. He put up an affidavit saying that they used to sell coffee at Francesco's, it used to be called, the previous establishment. Yes, they sold ground coffee, but they never brewed coffee there. It's not true that they were selling sandwiches prepared in there. I used to go there. I go by every day, and that's part of the dishonesty. Nobody sold ever sandwiches or coffee to go at that establishment. And the store was closed after Francesco left. And contrary to what Mr. Keshu says on his affidavit, there was no selling of anything until October, when he reopened. In that interval, the store was closed, and I used to go by every day. So I know it was closed. It was never open until October. So the other affidavit is saying that they used to sell coffee and baked goods. And I don't want to imply that my neighbors lied. Probably they were mistaken, as I was until recently, thinking that Acristi, the company that provides, makes Oreo cookies. That company bakes cookies at their own facility, packages, bring them to what used to be San Francesco, and sell them. To me, that was bad, because the cookies are baked. My understanding now is that baked goods is different according to the city. But that was the only kind of baked goods that were sold. They were in package.
I'll ask you now for your final comments, please.
I oppose vehemently to this application because Mr. Ashes has been deceiving. His lack of honor, integrity, sincerity, it's immoral what he wants to do, and that goes against our community.
Thank you very much. Panel members, any questions? No. Next speaker, moderator. Shall we move along, please?
Ian Andres, you've been unmuted.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
We do hear you. Good morning.
Great. Hi. My name's Ian Andres. I'm a lawyer with Goodman's. I'm representing Kenneth Bonner, who owns 44 Dusen directly across the street and who is also very much opposed to this application. I want to start with a few legal points. The first point is that the applicant has not met the statutory prerequisites for the committee to consider and approve this application. This is not a minor variance application. It's an application for additional non-conforming uses under 452A2 of the Planning Act. And it's a very broad and vaguely defined set of uses being sought. In order to attain approval under this subsection, the applicant must conclusively demonstrate that the subject property benefited from illegal non-conforming use, and this is important, that continued until the date of the application. Those words are in the legislation. The applicant must also demonstrate the proposed new uses are either similar to the purpose for which the building was used when the bylaw prohibition first took effect in the 50s, or more compatible with the uses that are currently permitted in the bylaw than the purpose for which the building was used in the 50s. In this case, the applicant has failed all of these tests. We accept that illegal non-conforming use previously existed, but it was forever lost due to being discontinued for a very long period of time, and the current use frankly is unlawful. Our client has filed extensive sworn evidence with supporting documentation confirming there was no convenience store, no small corner store or grocery store on the property between January 2018 and October 2021, which is nearly four full years and more than two full years before the pandemic occurred. There's also extensive evidence that the current owner has showed no intention to continue the previous legal non-conforming use throughout this time until the store recently opened in October 2021, three and a half years after the previous use was abandoned. And in response to what my friend, Mr. Flett, said, this is not misapprehension or speculation in any way. The source of all of this information is the applicant itself. The applicant filed numerous real estate listings through MLS in which he advertised the property as an ideal location for a bar or restaurant with a patio. The applicant also entered into a lease with Boxcar Social, as my friend indicated, who publicly declared through flyers its intention to open a bar and seek a liquor license at this location. So the applicant only has himself to blame for what Mr. Flett, his lawyer, is now calling misapprehension and misunderstanding. All of this information came from the applicant. There's no question that there was no store operating on this property on March 17, 2021, which is the date the application is made and the only relevant date for the purposes of subsection 452A2. The legal non-conforming use had been abandoned at that date and was forever lost. And just ask yourself logically, with no actual use on the property on that date, how can the applicant argue an intention to continue a use that was not operating while at the same time actively applying to pursue a different use? Those two things are irreconcilable, and it doesn't make any sense. Moreover, the proposed new takeout eating establishment use is not at all similar to the grocery store that was operating in the 50s when the zoning first prohibited the use. At that time, there was no food or beverages prepared on the site. It sold small confectionery items. And the proposed uses now have a much higher intensity and impact than some of the other speakers have spoken to. It's also not more compatible with the uses permitted in the bylaw, which are all strictly residential uses. An eating establishment use cannot be more compatible with residential uses when it is strictly prohibited. And even small retail stores are prohibited in this area, although contemplated in some other parts of the R-zone. So there's no question that eating establishment uses are not more compatible. As a result, there's no statutory basis on which this application can be approved. And Toronto Building Staff initially agreed with this position last July. They indicated that the legal non-conforming use had been called into serious question and could no longer be confirmed. And at that time, there was still no convenience store in operation. As you've heard, the applicant submitted some materials which caused Building Staff to reconsider their position and accept the applicant's claims at face value. But by their own admission, Building Staff are not capable determining this issue. They're not adjudicators. They did not have a committee application before them. They didn't even have a building permit application before them. So they don't have the tools to assess the credibility or veracity of the materials filed by the applicant. And even if they did, the application still fails the statutory prerequisites for the reasons stated. As indicated in my friend's written submission, the four tests for assessing a minor variance application do not apply, so I'm not going to speak about those here. But I would also point out that in my friend's written submission, he does cite a case which purports to provide legal tests under section 452 of the Planning Act. But that case is irrelevant because it dealt with an enlargement or expansion of a building, which is not the application.
I'll ask for your final comment now, please.
Okay, the final comment is that the planning report is also misguided. It does not address the correct portion of the official plan policy. And it's true that councillor Bai Lao is opposed to this application. Her letter clearly states that. My client agrees with that. The conditions are not sufficient. And I would respectfully urge you to reject this application based both on its lack of statutory jurisdiction and its lack of planning merit.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions panel, there is a question from Mr. Solomon.
So I'm trying to understand then, if you believe that they don't fit under that particular section of the Planning Act, what do you see then, what are you asking then the committee to decide or to do? I'm not sure I understand that.
I'm asking the committee, thank you for your question, Mr. Solomon, I'm asking the committee to reject this application because the applicant does not meet the statutory prerequisite to even apply under that subsection because there was no legal non-conforming use continuing on the date of the application. And those words, continuing on the date of the application, are directly quoted from the Planning Act. So without that prerequisite being met, the committee actually has no jurisdiction to approve the application as it's framed for you. The only way that this applicant could actually seek to have these uses added would be through a full rezoning application that would go through a full public process. And frankly, that's what the official plan contemplates for a change of use of this magnitude. But there's no ability to do this through 452A2 because the tests are not met.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, panel? The speaker, okay, we'll go on. We have one more speaker on this application registered.
Mr. Simeon, you've been unmuted as well.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
We do hear you. Please state your name.
Excuse me, my name is Lazarus Simeon. I live at 30 Dusen Street. Thank you for taking the time to hear. I'm not going to repeat or reiterate any of the other comments that my colleagues and neighbors have already stated, except to say, and perhaps to stress the fact that from the very beginning, the owner had indicated that this was an ideal location for a bar. They had placards up on the property itself. And I think this is the ultimate goal here, regardless of what the current application says. The ultimate goal here is to change the land use to an extent to allow for the sale of liquor and to turn this into like a bona fide restaurant property. With respect to, all due respect to Mr. Flett's comments, this was not inferred. This was overtly stated in the communications that we received from the first tenant who moved into that property or took ownership or whatever, residents in that property, that Boxcar Social. And then, like I said before, in the various advertisements by the owner. So it's not an inference. This was overtly stated that this was going to be the end goal here, of this particular property. And with regards to the space for the kitchen right now, there are plenty of establishments and restaurants in the neighborhood or further down on Harvard Street that have that size of a kitchen that work quite well to service a restaurant. So it's not out of the question. You don't need to have a massive kitchen. I've worked in restaurants or been around restaurants all my life. You can function a restaurant or, you know, have a functioning restaurant, and with that size of a kitchen, it's enough. And I really don't want to take too much of your time. I think the other comments were fairly eloquent and fairly clear and thorough in their opposition to this particular proposal. Thanks for taking the time to hear me, and I will just mute myself now.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Simeon, panel? Hearing none. It's now time to return. Let's check with the moderator. Moderator, were we able to raise? There was one speaker here that we couldn't raise.
Yeah, it was Mr. John Adams. No, I haven't been...
That's okay, okay. Thanks for trying. All right then, we'll go back now. This will be the opportunity for the agent to respond to these comments in rebuttal and respond only to the issues raised. So let's go back now to the agent, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do want to thank those who took the time out of their day to speak to the committee, notwithstanding it was in opposition. Let me begin just by clarifying one thing, that you're hearing the word restaurant over and over. And in this case, the definition that we are seeking for the use under... is the takeout eating establishment, which contemplates that anything that is purchased is consumed off-site. In respect of the concern with traffic, and everyone is very concerned with traffic throughout the city, that's understandable. However, it's pretty clear, and I would submit to the committee, that in reviewing the scope of what is sought here, notwithstanding the attempts of others to characterize it as a great magnitude or a very large change, the scope is simply not one that supports the notion that people will be driving from out of the area to come to this site for coffee and croissants. In fact, another of the writers to the committee indicated the number of other cafes and restaurants that are within walking distance of the area, and it would be my submission to you that those places would be just as easy to serve those coming from out of the area with coffee and croissants if that's what they're looking for. I do want to address head-on a number of submissions that you've heard from Mr. Andres, who is speaking on behalf of Mr. Bonner. Mr. Andres said that this site does not benefit from illegal non-conforming use because it was abandoned. Mr. Andres did not point you to the case law that clearly indicates that where there's an intention to continue a use, that that is sufficient to maintain the use. And throughout the period when the store was not operating, there was absolutely an intention to carry on that use. In fact, there were building permits that were authorized by the building department to permit for improvements to the property in order to pursue the retail use. And so unfortunately, that submission falls flat once you have that in front of you. My only other comment is that, in this respect, this is not a question of the official plan and how it applies. This is a legal non-conforming use that the committee has been asked to approve a similar additional use, and in effect, what we're saying is that there's not a big difference between coming to this location to get an espresso in addition to anything that you would otherwise buy in a small retail or grocery store. I'll leave those submissions there. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the committee.
Any further questions, panel members? For the... Mr. Chang, go ahead.
Yes, just for my information and for the record, could you be a little bit more specific about the date of the building permit that you applied in order to justify that this is still a non-conforming use?
Yes, Mr. Chang, I can, but I'm going to need to ask you for one or two minutes to bring that up. That's not something that I have at the tip of my...
Just for the record, so we know that, you know, what you said is accurate.
Right, sure. Give me just... So I will just need a minute because I'll have to bring that up just a moment, please.
And while we are waiting for him to show us the date, let's say what he said is correct. Can we get some technical support from the staff confirming that, you know, the building permit does have implication that the legal non-conforming is not expired?
So, Mr. Chang, just to give you some context, and the quickest way to provide you with the information is in reference to correspondence with a council for the city of Toronto. And this was, and so you've heard, and since you've asked, we'll now get into a little bit of this. The Building Staff in September of 2020 did find that there was that there was illegal non-conforming use at the site and recognized it as such. And then there was evidence that was submitted by a number of opponents that brought some of Mr. Kishav's statements into question. We responded to those in a very firm letter because the allegation was that Mr. Kishav was not being transparent. And in that letter, it provided, and remember, this is buildings which would also have been doing the building permit application. To provide some context, you'll recall Mr. Kishav's affidavit that he took on renovations at 42 Dusen Street to accommodate retail use. The period of those renovations began in the late summer of 2020, including the issuance of building permits in mid-October, the closing of permits in January of 2021, followed by ongoing non-permit work until summer of 2021. All this work was conducted during lockdowns and the dearth of available labor and supplies. So the principal dates in respect of those applications would have been in the summer of 2020 when the renovations began. So probably spring of 2020 is when the applications for the building permits would have been made. And so Building Staff, in considering those applications for building permits, would have been alive to the question of whether there was a legal non-conforming use there.
Okay. Mr. Chang, do you still want to have staff? You asked staff to comment on something. Do you want to go to staff now for a comment?
It would be good just to confirm. I mean, I'm not very legally informed with this. I'm just trusting the applicant's information.
Let's... Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not in a position to confirm all of that. We don't have all of the documents from the Building Division, so I can't confirm what has been stated.
Let's go to Ms. Hayes, who has a question, I think, for the agent.
Yes, thank you very much. I have a question with respect to, you know, you're looking for an extension of a use for a takeout eating establishment because planning staff have said that is the definition. I have heard the submissions and have reviewed all the materials with respect to the conditions that have been discussed with planning and your client and possibly yourself with respect to how to confine that. One of my issues is, I've heard your submissions that the intent is only to do baked goods and sell espressos, but there's nothing in these conditions that talk about, you know, like, say, you, you know, to some of the residents' concerns that you couldn't sell salads and prepared sandwiches, things that don't need ovens or fryers or grills or things like that. And so I'd just like to hear your submissions about, you know, some of the concerns with respect to the extent of the permission being requested and the conditions that are being suggested that should alleviate those concerns.
Thank you very much for your question, Ms. Hayes. Where I would begin is, you've probably had an opportunity to review in our submission photographs of the store. And if you haven't already had the opportunity to visit the site and the store that's currently there, you would see that there are a number of prepared foods that are all ready for sale for consumption off-site at the retail location. So you can go there today and lawfully buy soup. You can, there may very well be prepared sandwiches. I'm not sure. I haven't seen it in a couple of weeks. But you could pull out of a fridge, a sandwich, a salad, a soup. All these things would be, you could get right now. So it's our submission that that is actually not the, that's not the feature that is causing the problem in respect of how many of the opponents and the concerns of the opponents. To be perfectly honest with you, I believe the central concern of the opponents, and I put myself as much as I can into their shoes, is that the words "takeout eating establishment" cannot but raise the vision of something more than just a cafe. And had we been able to define the use to something as specific as an espresso machine and a warming oven, that's really what we would have liked to have done. But we were asked to use this definition coming from the zoning bylaw, and so what we've tried to do is reverse engineer it to create those restrictions so that you're not going to have the major, the significant impacts. In terms of whether there would be sandwiches in addition to baked goods, because those are already sold on-site and already lawfully sold on-site for consumption off-site, I don't think that that's really where the crux of the dispute is.
Okay. If there are no further questions for the applicant, let's take this application into committee for a motion. And unless there is, so we're going to go take it into committee now. And I'll look to panel members for any comments, if they want to make a comment before we move to a motion. Any comments, panel? Mr. Chang, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to add that if we are going to approve the, this application based on the information we have, we should restrict or put in the condition that there should be no commercial kitchen allowance. When the package passed to the Building Department, there will be no, you know, the fire department and the Building Department mechanical review. They will make sure that there's a restriction on the kitchen or the foot prep area. So in that case, many of those concerns that the neighbors have brought up will basically be illegal to have. I am, my experience dealing with the Building Department and the Building Co. is there is a system there that can restrict what kind of food to be made. You will need a grease trap. You will need a lot of things to make that kind of restaurant or takeout restaurant happen if you are going to apply for permit, of course, right? So I think from my point of view, I have no issue with the expansion of the food they're going to provide to a point that it shouldn't be creating all those waste and all those issues that the neighbors have brought up. So I think if we can tie that condition, I think the system can protect the neighbors.
Other comments? Ms. Hayes?
I have a bit of a differing view. I think in looking at evaluating this application, I'm not convinced that the impact, that the, it's similar use to the original use in the context that was present before, other than there's a coffee and a muffin. But the, I think it's an expansion that I don't think is, does not come without adverse impacts, and I can't support the application as I don't believe that we could satisfactorily put into place conditions that would have the constraint that was necessary. And that's my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon?
I would have to agree with those comments. The applicant has indicated that they currently sell coffee. They currently sell baked goods. They also sell salads. And, but they indicate that their proposal is to really only sell, make baked goods and coffee there. But they're already doing that now. And so it raises in my mind really what is it that they're actually looking to do? And in my view, what they're looking to do is to expand the use to beyond what is currently there now, and I don't believe it is similar then to what, to a retail store. And I believe then that the impacts of that would not be appropriate. So I cannot support the application.
Thank you. And to add from my comment, I am persuaded by the written submissions and by the verbal submissions this morning that this is not desirable. So I won't be able to support it either. So I do look to panel for a motion on the application, please. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you. For the reasons that have been noted and the evaluation criteria that we have to apply to applications under 45 2, I would move a motion to refuse the application.
Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded by Mr. Solomon. So moved and seconded to refuse the application. Those in favor of that motion, show of hands, please. Those opposed? So, the motion is carried by a vote of three to one. Let the record show that Mr. Chang was in dissent. And with that, the panel moves along to item number three. Or do we think we have number one on? Okay, I'm going to reverse a little bit then. We did set aside number one. We're going to go back now to item number one, which was set aside. And we'll return to that one and have the agent for that one join us, please.
Hello?
Hello, good morning.
Yeah, good morning, sir. My name is Jose Romero. I represent my client for 282 Arlington Avenue.
Thank you. Just stand by for a moment while I remind the public what the panel has before it in the way of materials. On this application, before us are the submitted materials. There's a cover letter from the applicant. There are site statistics from the applicant, November. And there is a forestry report from Urban Forestry. Okay then, on this application. We have no one standing by in opposition, do we? No. So, panel members, does anyone wish a presentation on this application? Hearing none. I'll look to panel for a motion, please. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Having reviewed the materials on file, I believe in the context of what other built forms of accessory structures exist in the neighborhood, this is not out of context, and I would like to move a motion to support the application or to approve the application subject to forestry condition number one.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded, Mr. Chang. Moved and seconded to approve subject to forestry. All those in favor, show of hands, please. And that is a unanimous vote to approve the application. And with that, the panel moves to item number three. 20 Amsterdam Avenue. On 20 Amsterdam, before us are the submitted materials. There is a staff report from Urban Forestry. And there is opposition in the form of the following: correspondence from 15 Amsterdam, 31, 16, 17, 18, 37, and 51 Amsterdam, and also 22 Amsterdam. And there is a 59 signature petition in opposition, received March 23rd, signed by owners and occupants of, well, there are 59 addresses here. I'm not going to read them all. They are on Amsterdam Avenue in the order of about 25, from Westview Boulevard in the order of six, from Holland Avenue, two signatures, and from Galbraith, nine signatures, and one from Yardley Avenue. Okay then, moderator. Let's have the agent join us.
Ashwik Chabra, you've been unmuted. If you can try to unmute yourself on your end.
Hear me?
So we can hear you, but barely. So maybe you could try to speak up, and I'm going to try to do it on my end as well.
Okay. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Much better, very good. Please state your name.
So, so we have four variances here.
Hello? Yes, would you begin, please, by stating your name?
Yeah, sure. Myself, Ashwik Chabra, and I'm the architect for this application. And I want to bring light to the four variances which we have here for 20 Amsterdam. Can you share our presentation?
Yes, we shall. Just hold on for a moment while we bring it up. There we go.
Are you referring just to the plans, or had you submitted something, a specific presentation?
We submitted a specific application, like a presentation.
Just one minute. When did you submit it?
We submitted a day before. Can I? Yeah.
This is it, okay.
Yeah. So we have four, currently we have four issues here. First is maximum lot coverage, which is like 35% of the lot area required by the city. Second is floor space index. Third is minimum front yard required landscape. And fourth is maximum permitted height. So the first one, we are achieving 37.43% of the lot area right now with our application, and we are allowed up to 35%. But we already have some applications which are approved by the city, which goes almost more than 40%. So we have also added our evidence in this presentation. So that's why, and another reason is, we have... that's why, and the another reason is we have like maximum houses we have there. So we have like the garage in the backyard. So they have the house lot coverage plus the garage lot coverage. So with our new proposal, we are bringing the garage in the building. So that's why our maximum lot coverage is increasing. So then coming to second point, the FSI, FSI got uh is more than what uh what stated in the bylaw, but we have some previous cases where the FSI increased than like what was allowed in the bylaw. So if we can go down, more down like. Yeah, can you stop here? Yes, so we have like some previous decision approver- approved in the neighborhood where we have like maximum lot coverage increasing up to forty-three percent for eighty-six Amsterdam, then ninety-one Amsterdam have forty percent of the total area. Similarly, one oh five Amsterdam have thirty-eight percent of the total area like these are more than what we proposed and has been already approved in the past. Same with the FSI, it has been approved in the neighborhood in the past. And it was more than what we are uh trying to get it. Then the minimum front yard required landscape, similar thing with that. Like for eighty-six Amsterdam, it got approved for forty-one percent and for ninety-one Amsterdam was fifty-five and similar cases was present there. Then uh the last one is maximum permitted height of all exteriors. All side exterior main wall is seven meter. So we have a previous case with ninety-one Amsterdam where the, we got an approval for eight point six meter height for the main walls. So I want to bring light uh to this for all the committee members like uh we want to build a house and uh we are building as per our client requirement and uh we are trying to be within the bylaws. So yeah, like I want to say that, that's it for me.
That's it for you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, panel. Questions at this stage or shall we go to the speakers? Let's go to the speakers then. Moderator, let's have the first speaker join us, please.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Chair, uh, the first, Randy Somis, the first speaker, will not be speaking. So we can go uh to John Keeble.
Let's do that, okay.
John, you've been unmuted.
Uh, yes, good morning. My name is John Keeble and I live at uh fifty-one Amsterdam Avenue. I've lived here for over uh fifty years and just so you know, I born and raised in East York in this community since nineteen forty-nine and lived on five streets into the wartime houses. Um, quite frankly, uh, the block of story and a half that flow into the bungalows from Glenburn to Westview, we have already had two houses built to the footprint with no problem at all to these houses because the houses line up in flow. We have a consistency in this area that uh it looks natural. We, we realize that the upper part of uh Amsterdam, yes, was the older part when I was younger, that was dysfunctional and it was chopped up. But there's no reason to destroy the flow of the story and halves. With two houses being already built to the footprint, we have a constant history on this street of we've had a movie, movie made superhero. We've had a sick kids hospital do cur- two commercials, one recently last year during COVID. Um, this street has a natural history of, of, of a community flow. So to put in one of the bungalows that, what he is requesting with not minor variance, these are large variances that will change the whole culture and the look of the whole street. And plus, if you give into, if some of the variances, what he is saying, one of them will affect by putting a door on the other neighbor's driveway. That will affect every bungalow in this whole community. It will change the whole community from Saint Clair, O'Connor, Victoria Park to Holland Avenue. Every bungalow will be affected by this decision. Um, if you can just take into consideration, yes, change is constant and we do need to upgrade. But these houses have been around since nineteen fifty and they have sustained and that bu- and the story and halves are four bedrooms. So I, I can't see, being that I'm born and raised here, the need to destroy uh the block for, and put an eyesore in just for one person. He bought a small lot house and he's asking for large variances that do not fit in and will not line up aesthetically with uh what's going on here. Plus, there'll be the problem with the soft shoulder and the drainage where we already, he won't have enough room for runoffs. Um, I'm hoping that, I realize that every, the whole community has changed, but you have to look at why destroy this block that has a natural flow? When you go on it and you see it, it has nothing to do with the upper part of Amsterdam or the other areas that are going on. Um, I think he can build something nicely within the bylaws, but variances are there for the simple reason being, he wants to change the rules of, of the building code. I do not see it necessary at all. Um, and being that I'm born and raised here, I can tell you that uh this will affect, your decision here will affect maybe, but maybe more than a hundred and fifty bungalows in this whole community if this was given into. Um, thank you for your, uh, your time and uh, and, and take care.
Okay, thank you, John. John, let me begin the questions for you and then Ms. Hayes, I'll, Ms. Hayes next. I just have a question. You mentioned that the, your particular concern about that door on the side and you, you described, how, how would the impact be as wide as you're describing?
Well, the impact on the door is on the soft shoulder. So if you go through every bungalow in this area from, and you go all the way down off of Salwen Avenue, you go to Tiago, you go especially Galbraith, you look at them all. They all have the same, same side as the driveway. So you would affect, i- in effect, what was built in the fifties and how these, how this was planned out by the builder, which was Katz, because I remember, because being I'm born and raised, because I actually lived in rooms with my parents at ninety-six uh when I was four years old on Amsterdam. You look at, at the soft shoulder on every side, it affects every bungalow in the community. It's not just, it's not a one-off on this street, what they're asking for. It will change, it, it will open the door. Because if you give, set a precedent, once a precedent is set, you can't change it, as you all know, because that's the way it works. And it'll be used for every builder that wants to go after those bungalows, once this person is get granted here.
Thank you. Well, let's go to Ms. Hayes' question now, followed by any others that are. Ms. Hayes, your question, please.
Thanks very much. Um, I noticed there was, I don't know how old the builds are, but new two-story homes at number twenty-six and number thirty-nine. Um, how, how do you feel what's before the committee now would?
Okay, um.
I, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear, hear what you.
Okay, sorry, I'll, I'll go again. So.
You, you trailed off.
Um, I'll, I'll, so there, there is some new builds. I don't know how new they are at number twenty-six and number thirty-nine.
Yes.
Um, can you tell me what differing impact or differing considerations you feel this application before the committee um differs from those builds?
Okay, thirty-nine did not need permission because he built exactly to the footprint. So therefore, he set the precedent that he built a house within the means on the platform and the structure of lining up. Twenty, twenty-six, uh, we had issues with him. He wanted to build, he wanted all kinds of variances and, and, and the reality was he didn't get his wish be, and it was for, and he built within the confines of lining up with the variances that were granted, but they were not, they were very, they weren't even, they're very small because he had to build to the footprint too because of what happened at uh thirty-nine Amsterdam. So the reality is this, this build application has these uh variances are, are asking to change everything and the lineup and the, and the culture of the street. It will not flow with the, the street at all. The aesthetically, it will look, it will be an eyesore.
Thank you, John.
And if two, and if two builders could build within the means of the footprint and keep that, the culture here, which we have, the history of the culture we've had with what's been done and, and used for commercials for sick kids and for, for the movie industry, uh, well, that'll be gone.
All right, John, we're, we're repeating a bit now. So let's go on. Are there any further questions now for the, uh, the speaker? Okay, let me just check. Do we have another speaker standing by, moderator?
Yeah.
We do. Okay, then, let's go to the next speaker and thank you to John.
Hello?
Uh, Lisa and Adam, I don't know who is going to speak, but you've been unmuted.
Okay, uh, this is Lisa. I'm going to be speaking. And if you could bring up, we have um some pictures in a file called C A Letter of Objection seven B. And it's called late as there are some very minor changes that we made from the previous mission.
Lisa, just while we're pulling up that material, Lisa?
Yes, that's it.
This is the chair. Lisa, just while we're pulling that up, would you mind stating your full name, please? Just for the record.
It's Lisa Demitrik.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll start now. My name is Lisa Demitrik and I live at twenty-two Amsterdam Avenue with my spouse. Our property is on the east side of twenty Amsterdam. We, we are concerned about the variances being requested here and we've come to voice our opposition. Chapter four of the City of Toronto Official Plan talks about the broad, broader and immediate context or geographic areas which are to be considered in new proposals. The characteristics of properties that are on the same block and the block opposite of the development are in the immediate context. The plan states that in instances of significant difference between the broader and immediate context, the immediate context will be considered to be of greater importance. As you can see in the first set of pictures, these are the immediate context. The west end of Amsterdam, close to O'Connor, is predominantly bungalows with small ten-meter lots like number twenty. The top photo is on the north side and we've labeled twenty Amsterdam. The bungalows are also directly across the street in the second photo. If you could go to the next page, please? You can see in the next page that the story and a half homes carry on eastward from the bungalows. Oh, I'm not sure why that's showing. That's not our photo. That's our photo number three, actually. Um, there's supposed to be a small map uh with some outlines. It might be just above the page. Sorry.
This, this isn't it, is it?
Uh, so I wanted to say that there is a picture um with story and a half bungalows which carry on eastward. And I'm not sure whose documentation this is, but um, this, those uh story and a half homes have wider lots than the bungalows. And bef- just below that, there is a map that outlines where the bungalows are in blue and the story and a halves are in light pink. And, oh, that's the photo right there, thank you. And you can see how hom- homogeneous this immediate context is to our street. Our block of Amsterdam is completely different from the block that is Glenburn to Victoria Park. And based on information submitted by the city on another development, we were able to view the frontages of all the properties on Amsterdam. And ninety-two percent of the properties on our block have frontages of nine, of ten to fifteen meters. But in contrast, thirty-eight percent of the properties between Glenburn and Victoria Park are within this range. So ninety-two to thirty-eight percent. Thirty-two percent of the properties on that end of the block have properties that are less than seven point six meters, but there are no properties like that on our block. This development will have a high flat roof and it looks like a three-story house. As you can see in the photos, that style will look completely out of place, being surrounded by houses with peaked roofs and no front or back balconies. Um, if you could go to our slide number three, hopefully you can find it. We have a privacy concern with the balconies too, especially with the back one, as it will look right onto our backyard. And the raised rear deck will look directly over into our backyard. The mass, height, and bulk of the proposed development will create issues related to loss of sun sight, privacy, drainage, facing an openness to us and our surrounding neighbors. According to the city, the front yard landscape will only be forty-three percent, much less than the required seventy-five percent. In contrast, we went out and calculated that our yard, which is typical to the area, is well above that bylaw. Mr. Afro said that the proposed lot coverage meets the general intent and purpose of his, of the zoning bylaws in his uh case, but that's not true. Ninety-six percent of the houses in our block are well under the bylaws. As an example, a bungalow without a detached garage has a lot coverage of about twenty-six percent and an FSI of point two-six. This proposal exceeds that at thirty-six percent and point seven-one for the FSI. Going above the bylaws is a significant change and not at all minor. The other two houses, or four percent of the street, have been recently developed and were both built within the bylaws. The most recent build went to the Committee of Adjustment with a lot coverage of thirty-seven percent and an FSI of point six-seven. That request was refused. The application that is before you now exceeds both of those. Mr. Afro's summary.
I'll ask now, I'll ask now for your final comment, please.
The official plan notes that the development is intended to be sensitive and gradual with little visible change so that the character of the neighborhood can remain intact. This application does not respect, nor does it reinforce the existing character or stability of our neighborhood. These variances, especially when taken in consideration with the existing houses in the immediate area, are not minor. And we respectfully request that you refuse this application. I also want to note that all.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you. Questions for this speaker panel? No. Okay, then, I believe that is the last registered speaker in opposition. Okay, then, it's now time to return to the agent, who will have a chance to offer comments and rebuttal on the specific issues raised by the two speakers. Let's go back to the agent now for rebuttal.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, there are actually two agents. Uh, they registered to speak both, so if.
Well, the other one can speak now if they want to, but they don't get double time.
To divide them. Right, yeah. Okay, so let's just go back to the first one.
Yes, we can uh. The other agent can speak, but they won't, but they don't get double time.
So Ashwick, you've been unmuted.
Uh, can Salim speak on the application? Because we resisted for two participants.
I'm sorry, as the agent, you get to register for one participant.
But we've never told that thing like before.
Yes, you did, you just, you're the agent, you get now to rebut. You have five minutes to rebut. You can divide that up between you.
Okay.
But you have five minutes to rebut between you. I don't mind how you.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. Let Salim speak and we can divide the five minutes between us. So.
Let's start now. We'll set the clock at zero and let's start now.
Okay, Salim. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Salim. Uh, can you please brought up our uh, uh, cover letter, please? Thank you very much. Uh, can you please go down and, yeah?
When did you submit the cover letter?
Uh, in yesterday, uh.
Yesterday?
Yeah, that is late submission though, but uh, just, yeah, this one, yeah. Go down. Uh, dear Chair, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to me. Uh, if you see the picture of these houses, those houses are already got approved uh through the, you know, the city. Uh, we are not asking anything beyond those things. We are asking everything which we already, already have the examples on the road. And, and um, and then we are not changing, uh, changing the lot sizes, we are not changing. We are the houses, height of the houses, we are keeping as per the law. So how, how do you? So, how height of the, over there, the bylaw, height is as per the law is eight point five, and our houses' height is eight point five. And, one more thing, if you brought up the, I sent another email today morning, which is objection resolution, can you please brought up this email? Objection resolution.
Just a minute, please.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay, I can talk with regards to, yeah, I can talk, yeah, the objection resolution. Go to the, my response, first one, first one, first one, okay. Go to down, little bit down. Here, if you see the response, my neighbor, actually, I talked to him, my neighbor, twenty-two Amsterdam, which is, I talked to my, actually, the, my client, who, client, the owner of the house, I, the twenty-two Amsterdam, he was requesting me to move the side entrance, and I talked to my landowner, and he accepted, and we actually moved the side entrance to other side. So, two of the complaint, who are talking, they are talking about the side entrance, that is already moved, because my, my landowner, he said, he wanna leave the house over there, he doesn't want to make any, any issues with the neighbor. And then, go to, and then, on another, 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 you know, objection, the lady, I forgot her name, sorry to respond, she said, there are the, there are the, almost seventy-five percent, more than seventy-five percent houses are actually like that. I know, I accept it, that is, but right now, everything, everything is changing day by day, and it has to be accepting, everybody has to accept it. You can see, there are a lot of example on this road. I have already presented, presented these in exhibit, exhibit number two, there are a lot of examples, more than, more than ten houses. And then, we have the, we have the flat roof on the road, we have the peak roof on the road, we have the gable roof on the road. So, dear Chair, so that is my concern, like, if you go to the second one, the complaint, please go to the second one. Okay, get to the, exactly last pages, the last page. There are fifty application, oh, okay, go, go up, go up, go up, yes, go up little bit, little bit, here, go down, little bit, go down. Here, so couple of, couple of complaint, objection, objection I have got, which is sunlight. If you see the sunlight direction, not direction, you can see over there, and sunlight direction is blue line. So technically, my house is not making any obstacle, any of the house, because sunlight is, when it's set, when it is registered, it's coming from the east side, and down, and set at the west side. So technically, the direction, the sunlight is having over there, entire community, there is no issues with the sunlight. And my, and again, I say, dear Chair, my house, the height wise, we are, we are proposing the height as per the bylaw, only there are minor variances we are requesting, which is couple, only four things, which we have the example on this road. So, dear Chair, my, I'm requesting to all of you guys to accept these changes, we have to move on, we have to build the community, and we are not changing anything on the community, we are just making everything...
I'll ask you to make, excuse me, I'll ask you to make your final comments now, please.
Yeah, my, my final comment is done.
Thank you. Panel members, any questions for this applicant? No. Hearing none.
I do have one, sorry.
Mr. Chang, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I truly think that most of the variances are very minor. The only thing that concern me is the front yard landscape, and I see that as a huge asphalt driveway. Only question I wanna ask the applicant is, are you okay, if I'm going to suggest to approve this application, are you okay to turn them into permeable paving?
That's a question for you, agent.
Yeah, can you please repeat the question again?
Go ahead.
Sorry, the question is to change the asphalt paving of your driveway into permeable paving.
Permeable pavers.
Right. Currently, currently, we have the soft landscaping, which is sixty-four percent.
Now, the question is very specific. The question is, would you be agreeable to having the driveway finished in permeable pavers?
The, yes. So currently, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, let's take the application into committee for...
Chair, I just have, I just have one question, please.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Could I hear your response to the objectors' comments about the design of the building or the built form not meeting, in their opinion, the character of the immediate neighborhood?
Uh, if you see my picture, I have attached with the, with the application, my cover letter, you can see the built form over there, some of them are... Yeah, my cover letter. My cover letter, please, yeah. Look, some of them are, yes, some of them are gable roof, some of them are definitely flat roof. So it's a mix, and these are all actually the, you know, the custom-made houses. So if you see seventy-six and seventy-six A and seventy-six B, you can see seventy-six, yeah, you can see. Even eighty-six and eighty-eight, if you see, our houses, the flat roof, and those houses also have flat roof. And rest of the thing, we have, you know, we have the porch in front, every houses has a porch and the garage. So, dear committee member, I think it goes on this community, on this land, on this twenty Amsterdam.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, we shall take this application then into committee for a motion. First, there might be some comments from panel members. Panel members, comments? Mr. Chang, go ahead.
I'll just make a, a man and perhaps even a proposal as well. I think the variances are very minor, specifically, they didn't ask for any setbacks. The only footprint changes is, is on the floor space index and also the lot coverage. So we often see in Toronto, the, the floor spaces, it could even go up to one upon nine, and what they're asking for is from point six to point seven, which I think is reasonable. Same thing for the changes of the coverage, it's thirty-five to thirty-seven. Still didn't have any issue with the setbacks, and the applicant is okay with, with the driveway being, you know, applied with permeable paving, so item number two, I think is acceptable as well, and for the reason of that, and I understand the, the concern of the neighbors as well, but I really think that the, if we are just looking at, at the design, at the scale of the application, I think it does meet the criteria. So I would like to support this application.
Any other comments? Ms. Hayes?
I'm struggling with this one a little bit, for the main point of, of the official plan test with respect to the physical character of, you know, of, of the neighborhood and the immediate versus the, the broader. I think the variances on their own do not cause me a lot of concern. I'm having a little bit of a, um, a challenge with the physical character test under the neighborhood's policy of the OP, that's where I'm struggling a bit.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with a new two-story house on this property. I do have concerns with the front yard soft landscaping, and so I would support a motion that would require that the driveway be of permeable material.
Okay. I, I'm struggling, I've, struggling with it a bit too, because I thought the two speakers in opposition, when I put their two comments together, it made sense to me that in the immediate context of the, the large area of smaller lots that are bungalows, that this will certainly stand out. Now, as of right, they can, they can build this built form, but, but as the first speaker was saying, why not do so within the, within the limits of the, of the bylaw? And I was concerned, I am concerned about the, the front yard soft landscaping, but when I look at the actual numbers involved, they are, as Mr. Chang has pointed out, fairly minor. They are minor, I'm, it's only a coverage issue of going from thirty-five to thirty-seven for three. So, yeah, I'm... Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
I was just going to add, having said that, when you look at the, what is resulting in the, the built form and the variance for sidewalls, it is quite, it is quite minor in the context. I think physical character is changing, it hasn't quite hit this, that block yet. But that's my struggle, but I can support the application if the permeable pavers for the landscaping is part of, of the motion.
Well, let's, let's go to a motion then, is anyone ready with a motion? Mr. Solomon, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move a motion to approve the variances subject to urban forestry condition number three, and also subject to that the driveway as be of permeable material.
Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded by Mr. Chang. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Those opposed, let the record show that Mullock was opposed. The motion is carried by a vote of three to one, and the application is so approved. With that, the panel moves on to item number four. Item number four today is ninety-two Brookside Drive. On this application, panel has before it submitted materials, including two photographs of trees on site, cover letter from the agent, presentation materials from the applicants received March twenty-three, and tree plans from October. We have comment from City Planning, and we have support correspondence from sixty-four Brookside, and nineteen form letters in support from owners and occupants, twenty-nine Castles Ave, eleven fifteen, nineteen seventy-four, seventy-six, seventy-eight, eighty-two, eighty-eight, ninety, ninety-four, ninety-six Brookside, ninety-five, one oh five and one oh nine Burgess, twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-seven, and forty-one First Brook, received before March So, checking with the moderator, moderator, it is a fact that we have one speaker in opposition registered. Okay, let's have the, the agent join us then, please. By stating your name.
Hi, my name is James Twine.
James, good morning to you, you have five minutes to pres, to present your application to the panel, go ahead, please.
Okay, so, in the cover letter that we submitted, I just described the overall rationale for the project, which was the, I'm looking at a slide for one oh two Donlands, which is not the right address right now.
Chair, the presentation material that was part of our package was not, was for one oh two Donland, so, with the wrong application.
Yeah, that's not our presentation. I, I did not submit a presentation to the, just the drawings, and the support letters are for ninety-two Brookside.
I think now, we have the drawings up then now, here are the drawings for ninety-two Brookside.
Yes, that's right, yeah. Okay, and so you would like me to proceed with the presentation, then?
If, you know, you don't have to, but you have the opportunity to if you wish.
Okay, sure, I can, yeah, so as I said in the cover letter, the overall rationale for the project is, the owner of the house has lived in the neighborhood for twenty-two years now, and is in his early sixties and is planning to, for aging in place in the current residence, and also to have his children and possibly grandchildren in the house with him as he does so, and so looking to expand the overall square footage and make this, and accommodate that, the, the living arrangements as he sees fit. And so, that involves a, a modest rear addition to the ground floor, a very modest rear addition to the second floor, and a third floor addition to the top. We've attempted to work with the existing form in the neighborhood, the third floor addition is set back to the existing ridge line of the house, and not, we feel not to be extremely visually impactful from the street or to any of the neighbors. The owner has, obviously evidenced by the letters of support that he's garnered, has, has shown this to a wide selection of, of people in the neighborhood, and has received very positive feedback and comments regarding the proposal, and feels that, and I feel, and he does as well, that it's, the variances being requested are overall minor in nature, and the project would be positive for the neighborhood as a, as a whole.
Thank you very much. Panel, any questions for, there is a question, Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Um, I just, before we get to the objector, in the planning, the email from planning, they had made a comment with respect to the height, and wanted your response about whether or not you'd be prepared to lower that, given some of the ceiling heights noted in the plans. I didn't see a response to that email.
Was that from Sean? Was that from Sean Galbraith? Was that the planner, the email?
No, a city planner. So it's an email, email of March the sixteenth, from Sean Gunther.
Oh, Sean Gunther, sorry, yeah, I had his name incorrect. Yeah, so I did provide a response to that.
I don't see it as part of our, or I can't immediately see it, could you verbally tell me what you had responded?
Sure, I can, I mean, I can, I can literally read it to you. It was, and Cindy Long, who was the, who was the, who I'd been corresponding with back and forth, the CA application, was, was CC'd on that email as well, so I'm surprised that she didn't make it part of the, of the package, but...
Maybe I just missed it, but if you could just let me know.
Yeah, that's fine, of course. Yeah, so, this is, and it essentially is, is similar to what I had said in the cover letter regarding the height, but I think Sean slightly misunderstood the, the overall height as being, he, he misunderstood the third floor ceiling height as being higher than what it was, and so, the, my response to him says, the overall height of the project is proposed to be ten point three-three, but that is only the dormer section that is above the ten-meter height. So the majority of the flat roof at the third floor is at nine point five-seven meters, and the proposed dormer, which does rise to ten point three-three, is set back from all sides, and we feel to not be visually impactful from the street or the surrounding areas. And the rationale for this dormer is to introduce some south sunlight into the third floor space at a high level with a clear story window, to provide direct sunlight in the winter months, but when the sun is, when the sun is lower, but in the summer months, it would provide... it would provide indirect shaded light at that south side. And the intention is that one of the clear story windows will be operable to allow for natural ventilation.
Thank you. Thank you, I did read that. I just didn't realize it was a direct response to that to that email. I apologize, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, our concern is, our concern is height. Tell me, what, what is the interior ceiling height on the third floor?
It would be eight feet.
It's eight feet, okay.
Yes.
And variance number two, excuse me, variance number two, the ten point one one meters is the entire length of the, of the side exterior main wall?
No, it's only that dormer section.
It's only the dormer section.
It's only the dormer section, yes. The main, the third, the main, the overall length of the third floor sidewall is, the roof is at nine point five seven meters there.
Okay, thank you, all right. Any further questions now, panel? We have, we do have a speaker registered, okay. Moderator?
Marlene, you've been unmuted.
My name is Alan Stokel and I own the property on twenty-nine First Brook Road along with Marlene Chamey. And for some reason, her name popped up, so may I go ahead and speak?
You may, of course, you are registered. Your name is on the, on the registration, so go ahead.
Yes, okay, thank you. The, my objection, by the way, I'd just like very quickly to let everyone know who hasn't been on Brookside or First Brook Road, these are all two-story, single-family dwellings. Usually, usually they're, you know, two houses side by side. And they're, they all look like that. So, you know, very much like the East York thing that you did before, I'm very concerned that the, of the ten meter height, there's no other buildings in the neighborhood that are that high. So I don't understand why that's acceptable, you know, and it's, it's, it's more than just, than just a minor variance. Now, the, the other issue that I have is the three meters over the sidewall height. This is definitely not a minor variance, three meters. That's quite, I mean, that's what, over ten feet or something?
Right.
So at, at any rate, the, what, what that also means for us is the, the floor space. Now, I, I understand the owner of the property says, you know, very much like me, he's retiring and he wants to have his, his sons come from university and all that stuff. But the reality is that when, once you build a property that large, like a, a super home, then you, the next owner, or for that matter, even the owner when things change, that could very easily be a rental property as there are many rental properties around here. And what they usually do is split them into two or three separate areas, which means it's two or three separate households. And of course, that gets into a parking issue because they're, one of the things they wanted to do was get rid of the parking. And now I have a parking pad, so, or we have a parking pad. So I'm, I'm not objecting to that for me. However, people do park in front of my driveway because there is no other place to park sometimes. We live in the beaches and when there's festivals, et cetera, it gets really, really crowded. So I, I think that's, you know, just for the neighborhood and the way things look and, you know, keeping the peace, that's very definitely an issue. And basically, my concern is when I go up to East York and look at these monster homes that are being put on properties that originally were supposed to be one and a half story bungalows, I am thinking, is that what, you know, are, are we gonna have to put up with that? I don't think it's good for the neighborhood, for the children in the neighborhood. There's a park at the top of the street, there's a school at the bottom. This is no place to have monster homes. Thank you very much for your, for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for this speaker panel? Hearing none, we shall return to the agent, who have an opportunity to respond to that. Just those issues, please, in rebuttal. Go ahead, agent.
Sure. Well, I would, I mean, I would, I suppose I would take issue with the description of the proposal as a monster home. I don't think that's what it is. And I think it is within a reasonable, a reasonable FSI for the neighborhood and given what the owner intends to use it as a single-family dwelling. The intention is not to, to create a rental property in any case whatsoever. The, the parking, the issue that the, the objector brought up about parking, we are not intending to take away a parking space. There is no parking space currently at the property. There is an existing right-of-way between the, the property and the property to the north. And so nobody parks in that driveway currently. They all park on the street. And so we are not intending to take away a parking space at all. And I would just, I would reiterate my argument from before that I think that the, the owner who's sort of longstanding base in the neighborhood is, his intention is to stay in the neighborhood and to, to use this as a single-family dwelling. And I think the proposal that we have submitted is, is reasonable and acceptable within the sort of evolving character of the city as, as people's needs change as they age, as they age in place.
Thank you very much. I have a question for you and it's this. Has the, the owner of the other, the other half of the semi
Yes.
expressed agreement on this? And if so, in what, what form did they do that?
He has expressed agreement during the whole process of planning this proposal. He has submitted one of the letters of support that is, that has been submitted there. And the owner of the property to the north as well, across the right-of-way, has also submitted a letter of support.
Thank you. Further questions for the applicant panel? I am not hearing any further questions, so we can at this stage then take this application into committee for a motion. Unless there, anyone has a comment beforehand, but we can go to a motion. I'll look to someone to do so. Mr. Solomon, please proceed.
Okay, I, I'd like to move a motion to approve the variances subject to community planning conditions and also a condition that ties approval to the site plan and elevation drawings. That way, that issue of the height, overall height and side heights gets captured so that only a small portion of the, of the actual building can actually reach that particular height.
Very good, very good condition to attach. It is seconded by Ms. Hayes. So moved and seconded to so approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. That vote is unanimous and the motion, the motion is carried, the application is so approved. And the panel moves along to number five, twenty-one McGee Street. Twenty-one McGee.
Hi, Mr. Chair. It's number five and number six together.
Number five and number six together, okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think we should separate this just because there are different variances.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we should separate it. I would, I think the applicant, I'm in making their presentation and I'm going to ask the applicant for a presentation on this one because even though there are no registered speakers in opposition, I'd still like the benefit of, of an application. So I'd ask the applicant to make a brief presentation, an overview of what is in mind for the two sites involving the two applications, and then we'll deal with the two applications one at a time. So applicant, please join us.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We hear you loud and clear.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ken Kane. I am from Cassini Company. We're the designers for both sides of the semi here, acting on behalf of Paul Patel and Lera McGuire for nineteen McGee and Mark Bishop and Lana Russell for twenty-one McGee. I understand that you want to hear each application separately. So if I can first speak regarding.
Just a sec. Now, what we're gonna do, Mr. Kane, we're going to, we're going to vote on them separately because they are separate ownership. But in your presentation, you might be able, I think it's probably makes sense to us to get a, the full picture, would be if you could, in your presentation, speak to your concept and your vision for the entire, the entire project, both, both sides.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The existing, the existing homeowner wishes to enclose on both the left and right side of the semi, an existing third floor balcony that is exposed to the elements. They want to enclose it to increase the gross floor area right above the permitted. And for nineteen McGee, we are seeking to increase the permitted floor space index from a hundred and forty-five point one four square meters to, to increase it by a hundred and eight square feet. So as zoning, we're increasing the floor space index to one point zero eight. For twenty-one McGee, they also want to enclose an exterior third floor balcony and they want to, again, increase the floor space index to one point zero eight per the bylaw, which is increasing the GFA by a hundred and twenty-one square feet. As you can see in our presentation, if you can bring it up, we, we show at the back, we have a picture of what is existing for both nineteen and twenty-one McGee. If you can, yeah. Right there, there's nineteen McGee that's existing currently. And then a little farther down would be, you can see on the other side what's existing for twenty-one McGee. They want to take that balcony that's exposed, that's open to the outside and enclose it to a livable space. Our client has been transparent. If you slide down, you can see, you can see a plan and an elevation that shows what we wanted to propose for twenty-one McGee, where they're, they're enclosing the balcony there with just an en suite for the master bedroom, where it just has a vanity, a tub, toilet and a shower. And the same for nineteen McGee. There is, I think it's a little further up in our presentation showing what they're proposing on the third floor balcony. Again, they want to enclose it to put a master bedroom, primary bedroom en suite with vanity, toilet, tub and shower. Okay? Now, our client has been very transparent with the neighbors in their wishes to enclose the third floor balcony. And in saying that, we have submitted two letters of support from twelve McGee and twenty-three McGee Street. We feel that the variance to increase the floor space index is minor in nature, provides additional GFA for the homeowners without creating any adverse impact on the appearance. It doesn't change the footprint of the dwelling. The building height remains the same, the massing and scale and setbacks. It is in our opinion that the requested variance satisfies the intent of the official plan and maintains the intent of the zoning bylaw and has negligible impact on the neighboring property. Thank you.
And thank you, thank you very much. Okay, panel members, any questions here about Ms. Hayes? Go ahead. No?
Last thing, I'd just be prepared to move a motion.
Go ahead. Let's move a motion on number five.
If my colleagues have no further con, any comment, I'd be prepared to move a motion and I'll start with twenty, if we're doing them separately. Twenty-one McGee, I'd like to move a motion to approve the application as I believe what is being proposed is indeed minor. Enclosing an existing, or portion of an existing third floor deck, I don't believe there's any greater impact and I think it meets the four tests. And that would be my motion for number twenty-one McGee.
Is there a second? It is seconded, Mr. Cheng. Moved and seconded to approve on twenty-one McGee. Those in favor, show of hands, please. That motion is carried. The application, number five for twenty-one McGee, is approved.
So I'll move, I'll move on to nineteen McGee, item number six. I also believe, as this is just basically a mirror of what is being proposed for number five, although the variances may slightly differ between the two. I believe this application also meets the four tests. I don't believe there's any greater impact. I believe it's minor and it's appropriate. And I'd like to move a motion to approve the application.
Thank you. Second to that. Seconded once again, Mr. Cheng. It is moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And a unanimous vote carries that motion and number six, nineteen McGee, is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We move on to number seven, which is.
Mr. Chair, could we have five minutes?
We can take five minutes. So at this point, we've been going for a couple of hours. The, the panel will take a, well, we'll just take a brief, brief five-minute recess and resume in, resume at eleven forty. Thank you.
Thank you. So dark out, I had to turn, have to turn some lights on, otherwise I'm in shadow.
We resume. And we resume with item number seven, which is 54 Indian Road Crescent. On this application, before the panel are those materials submitted by the applicant and an arborist report prepared by Tom Bradley of Wellwind Consulting dating back to December. So... Let's have the agent join us, please.
Good morning, members of the committee, Mr. Chair. My name is Curtis Van Cullen.
Good morning, Curtis. Okay. Panel members, on this application, is there any request for a presentation? Hearing none. Okay, then. Any questions for the agent? No. Then I'll look to panel for a motion, please. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the variances are minor in nature, very minor, and so I would move approval of the variances with no conditions.
Thank you. That is seconded by Ms. Hayes. It is moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Thank you. And there a unanimous vote carries the motion, and the application is so approved. Panel moves along to item number eight, 159 Indian Road Crescent. Here we have before us applicant's materials, two photographs of trees, a 2020 COWA decision, email correspondence from the applicant, October 29, and a tree declaration plan from VG Architects, November 21. There is a staff report from Urban Forestry. And we have in opposition correspondence from 142 Indian Road, 82 Abbott, 161 Indian Road Crescent, 155 Indian Road Crescent, plus 98 Abbott Avenue. So let's have the agent join us, please.
Hello, my name is Peter Burton. I'm the owner and the architect for the property.
Good morning. Okay, you have five minutes to present your application to the panel. Please go ahead.
Sure. The first variance is required because the allowable is eight meters wide by 10 meters long. Because the property is oddly shaped as an L shape, the building is 10 meters wide by eight meters long, but it's not actually eight meters long, it's only 7.34. So the size of the building isn't the issue. It's just that it's been rotated, and following the letter of the definition of side yard or width and length, it's kind of an odd situation. I show a diagram there where you'd be allowed the building if it was rotated 90 degrees. The second thing is that the soft landscaping, it hasn't changed at all. In fact, I've increased the soft landscaping in front of the, where the entrance to the house is, the laneway house. And the existing parking area and landscaped areas are the same as they are existing. The other thing is, the 7.5 meters from an ancillary building containing a laneway sixes, ancillary laneway suite, our building is 6.3 meters high. I'm just asking for a bit more height, because I want to be able to add extra. I'm thinking of going to a passive house design, and if we shorten the house, it's hard to get an extra insulation. And I also want to be open to having a green roof. I want to look into the option of that right when we get the approval. So it's just one foot extra of height to allow for that extra insulation. And then the minimum required side yard setback, it's, I'm not sure, it says the north lot line here is 1.5 meters away from the lot. I guess the back, the rear lot line is .1 meters. And I'm not sure what the definitions are, because it's an L-shaped lot again. This is what's confusing me. But the objections that I've seen are to do with parking. I'm not here for a variance on the parking. There are two existing old garages there which are used for storage currently, and they're not for local people's parking. There's, one is storing an antique car, and the other one's storing a bunch of junk, which is rented by a tenant. Regarding the wood side, there was an objection of wood siding. I'm not stuck with wood siding. It just seemed to be the natural thing to do. And I think 82 Abbott Avenue had a concern about, I think one of the objections was concerned about adjacent buildings. Now, I'm an architect, and we've been building, I've been building buildings for 40 years, and we know how to build buildings in tight sites, and we're very, very careful about taking care of our neighbors. I mean, I'm going to be living here, so I really want to have happy neighbors and tenants. And we know that to build a building, there is some disruption, but we always take great care in hiring contractors who are able to deliver a project with a minimum amount of disruption. And also, the two adjacent buildings that they're referring to are garages. Their foundations, I don't know how deep they go, but not more than four feet, and neither will ours. So we won't be undermining any adjacent foundations at all. So it's perfectly, perfectly standard practice to be building buildings, two garages adjacent to each other, and a laneway suite adjacent to a garage in Toronto. So I'm not sure that the issue is a really big issue for our neighbors, and I know that we'll take care of them. I'm not, no, I'll leave it with you.
Thank you very much. Panel members, would you like to pose questions now, or wait till we hear from the speakers? I'm going to pose a question now, and that is, the 2020 application to the Committee of Adjustment was refused. You were the agent on that one as well. How does this application vary or differ from that application that was refused?
Well, it was refused because they said it was too big, and I reduced it greatly in size by about 35%. Now, it's, the size of it now is within the rules for laneway houses. So I reduced it in size by quite a bit.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go then to the speakers who are standing by.
Andrew, you've been unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
We do hear you, Andrew. What's your name?
Thank you. My name is Andrew Freeman, 155 Indian Road Crescent.
Please go ahead.
Did I speak up louder?
We're hearing you loud and clear. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
We would like to summarize the main points from our written submission. We have objections to three of the variances. We doubt that the intent of the official plan is to create more affordable housing at the expense of reducing garage parking and thereby increasing the pressure on street parking. The parking math is very simple. The occupants of a new laneway suite would probably need a car. Reducing, require a car. If the existing garage is demolished, in the process of constructing the laneway suite, two cars would have to find street parking. That is the garage car and the occupants' car. A more, a non-sustainable situation would develop of choking in street parking. The logical conclusion, therefore, is that the official plan envisages this form of densification in a manner where the existing garage is retained, and construction of the laneway suite takes place above and behind the existing garage. In this context, we would like to draw the attention of the committee to the laneway suite being built at 76 Kenneth. We believe that this is a model of a laneway suite, since it is constructed over and at the back of the existing garage, and the existing garage is an integral part of the laneway suite. In conclusion, we would like to, in contrast, in contrast correction, we would like to submit to the committee that the proposal is perhaps precedent-setting in that not one, but three garage parking spots are to be demolished in the process of constructing one laneway suite. Our objections, we've pulled together numbered one and four, which are the setback and the size of the building. We object to the building width of 10 meters, and the eight-meter bylaw width should be maintained. The ideal laneway suite would be constructed over and at the back of the existing two-car garage, which fronts onto the laneway, and so preserving two of the three existing garage parking spots. Failing this ideal situation, the laneway suite should be kept at the eight-meter width and setback from the lane sufficient to permit one outdoor parking spot with a minimum width of 2.6 meters, parallel to the north side of the proposed suite. This is not an ideal situation, but a compromise. It means that only, less, one less street parking permit would be required. Our objection to variance listed as number two, which is the soft landscaping. The enclave of the three triplexes, 155, 157, and 159, Indian Road Crescent, is served by one mutual driveway. There are a total of nine units in the complex. Six are three-bedroom and three are two-bedroom. In addition to the two garages on the 159 property, both 155 and 157 have a double-car garage. In total, 13 cars can be parked legally in the enclave. There is always congestion, and parking is always an issue. We speak from an experience of over 30 years. Regarding the parking situation on the 159 property, three cars, one from each unit, are parked outside, as showed on the photo in the filed submission. I'd be very grateful if you could show or consult that photo, because it tells a story. They occupy when tightly packed, width of 7.8 meters. The proposed reduction in soft landscaping would provide parking width of 5.8 meters, or the equivalent of two parking spots. As mentioned, three cars are currently parked in this area and occupy with a 7.8 meters. One additional car for the occupants of the laneway suite means the need for four parking spots, but the proposal provides space for only-
I'll ask for your final comment now, please.
In conclusion, there is only one solution to minimizing the need for more street permit parking and upholding the soft landscaping bylaw. It is to retain the double-car garage as part of the laneway suite. Two cars would park in the garage. One car could be parked parallel to the west side of the new laneway suite. Therefore, only one-
Thank you. Your time is up. Any questions, panel, for this speaker? Okay. Do we have it on the speaker, moderator?
David, you've been unmuted.
Is it my turn, David White?
Yes, is this David?
Yes.
Okay, David, you're loud and clear.
Good. I live at, David, my name is David White. I live at 173 Indian Road Crescent. I own the property there. I have no objection to the proposal. The only thing I would like to see is a condition, if it's possible, if it's within your jurisdiction, and that is, in compensation for the deficiency in soft landscaping, I would like to request that the, that the condition be that the city, subject to Urban Forestry's approval, that the city plant a shade tree on the Indian Road Crescent frontage, on the city boulevard there. I don't know if you can make that a condition- I don't know if you can make that a condition of approval, if you're inclined to approve the proposal. If it can't be a condition, perhaps Mr. Burton could at least give an undertaking that he'll support the installation of a large shade tree on the Indian Road Crescent city boulevard. There used to actually be, some years ago, quite a few years ago now, an enormous poplar tree there, which the city took down. I think they, I think it was kind of getting near the end of its life, and it wasn't a particularly good tree for a city situation. So if we could, the front lot is quite, quite large, so it could support, I believe, a shade tree. And of course, that would all be subject to urban forestry. I know this urban forestry has asked for payment in lieu, which is, which is fine. But if we could actually get the tree established there, that would be, that would be good. Those are my submissions.
Questions, panel?
Questions, panel?
Okay, then, are there any further speakers? No. Let's go back then to the applicant who have a chance to respond in rebuttal to just the issues which were raised by the two speakers.
Hi, it's Peter Burton again. I'd be perfectly willing to have a tree planted there. I'd plant it myself if that's the requirement. The city tends to go around and plant trees on our, I live over, right now, next, nearby. And they replaced the tree on my property with a sugar maple. I'd be happy to have that done here because I'm going to be moving into this laneway house. The second thing is, the whole thing about parking, I'm not asking for a parking variance. I'm just asking for the, actually, the main thing is the minor setback at the rear and the, and the shape of the building being eight by ten instead of ten by eight. And it seems odd that I had to come to committee for this, to get that, but I'm here because it seems reasonable to request that. So in terms of parking, the three tenants that are parking there now, they do not have leases on those parking spaces. There's no agreement to provide parking. I'm fairly lax with them right now because I don't want to, I don't think it's a big deal, but I'd be willing to limit that to the two spaces. But they typically park, there's three spaces there now, and it's the existing area of the landscaping. So not sure it's, I don't see congestion back there. I go there all the time and the cars are moving in and out, but I don't see any big congestion problems. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, we'll see if the panel has questions for you. I know I have one. There's Ms. Hayes, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Just one question related to parking. So if you're removing the brick garage on the one, one side of the lot, does the surface parking then still meet the requirements for the, the triplex that's there? You have enough spots without that garage?
Well, I would guess so because I've made an application for preliminary project review on several occasions, and this subject has never come up. I believe the parking bylaws have been relaxed. I'm not sure, though.
Yeah, no, I just, the question was, you know, you don't need a parking variance for the laneway suite. I just, the existing.
Yeah, there's, there's.
That was my question, if you understand what I was getting at.
I don't think the garages are required, no.
But the, so the parking spots within the garage are not counting towards your required parking that you need for the triplex? That's my question.
No, not that I know of, and I don't use them for the triplex at storage right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Further questions for the applicant panel? Hearing none, let's take this application then into committee for a motion. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I have more of a question for us internally. Joanne, do you recall why this was refused back in May of 2021? I think you might have been on that panel. Do you recall? Like, what was the reasoning?
As the applicant noted, my recollection was the size of the structure. Originally, they were going for a width of thirteen-point-six-seven, soft landscaping of thirty-five percent, a height of six-point-five-five meters. So from a width perspective, anyway, it's much different. But my recollection of that day is that it was a very, very large building that was being proposed. And the width was the, one of the major concerns, but, you know, the cumulative impact. I can't speak for the other members on that panel, but that's my recollection.
Okay, that's great. That's helpful. Thank you.
And that would be, I asked the applicant what he, why it had been refused in 2020, and that was, be consistent with his answer, too. Okay, Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you. I think that what's before the committee now, in my opinion, from an impact perspective and a built form perspective, is quite different than what we were asked to consider before. I think that what is being proposed now, although the width is a little wider, that I think the configuration of the lot lends to, to some of that. The landscaping is, is not any more deficient than it already exists. I'm not concerned with respect to the small height variance and the setback is, is currently in existing. So in its present form, I could support the application, subject to forestry condition number two. Those would be my thoughts.
Okay. Are you, would you like to make that a motion?
If my colleagues have no further comments, certainly, I'd like to move a motion to approve the application, subject to forestry condition number two.
Second to that motion, is there one? There is one, Mr. Cheng. So it is moved and seconded to approve, subject to forestry. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And that is a unanimous vote. To carry the motion, the application is so approved, subject to forestry. And the panel moves on to item number nine. Two-twelve Parkview Hills Crescent. Before us are the materials submitted by the applicant. There's an arborist report from November. There are commenting agency reports from urban forestry, from TRCA. And there's a staff report, a staff report, actually, from TRCA in addition. And there is support correspondence from the homeowner at two-ten Parkview Hill, Hills And on this application, we'll have the, have the agent join us now, please.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, yes, this is Lynn Houston. I'm the designer for this project.
Very good. Good afternoon. Okay, panel members, any requests here for a presentation? Any questions for the, the agent? No? I'm not hearing any, so in that case, we can take the application into committee. Oh, yes, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you. Having reviewed all the material on file, including the response from TRCA, I believe the variances being requested are indeed minor and appropriate. And I would like to move a motion to approve the application with no conditions.
Very good. Is there a second to that? That is seconded, Mr. Solomon. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. It is unanimous vote. Motion is carried and the application is approved. Thank you. Number ten, four-ninety-six Donlands. On this application before us, the only materials are those submitted by the application, or by the applicant in the original submission. So let's have the applicant join us, please.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We do hear you. State your name, please.
Yep, my name is Murray Fern. I'm representing the owners of four-ninety-six Donlands Avenue for the proposed new garage at the rear of the property.
Very good. Okay, panel members, on this application, does anyone think they'd benefit from a presentation? Anyone have questions for the agent? I'm not hearing any, so let's take it into, take it into committee for a motion. And Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you. Having reviewed the materials on file, the new garage is basically a re-siting of the existing garage. It may be slightly larger. I don't think that the variances being requested are major, would have any different impact, and I would be prepared to move a motion to approve the application with no conditions.
Thank you. Second to that. There is Mr. Cheng, so. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, please show hands. A unanimous vote. Carries the motion and the application is approved. That takes the panel to item number eleven, four, pardon me, one-seventy-three Chaplain. Now, on this one, I understand there is a request to defer? Yes, okay. And this is the one that the applicant was, the agent was on another, another, with the other panel at nine-thirty, so fine. Is that agent free to join us now? Good.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members. Ida Evangelista, on behalf of the owner of one-seventy-three Chaplain. Thank you very much for holding this for me. As I've just been retained for this project, I have the opportunity to review the variances along with opposition from one-seventy-seven and one-seventy-five. On that note, I would like the opportunity to defer this hearing today to allow us time to modify the plans, meet with the neighbors. I did speak to Ms. Mullins, and I did instruct, I did let her know that I was going to be deferring. Unfortunately, I did not have the contact information for one-seventy-seven. However, I believe we're all on the same page now that, you know, we do want to modify. We are going to work together. And, Mr. Chair, as you know, I always like working with the neighbors.
Okay, tell me this, so the, the request is based upon your thought that you can substantially alter the application in such a way as to, to gain support from the neighbors?
I believe so, Mr. Chair. Yes. I believe we can all work together in achieving something that, you know, suits everyone's satisfaction.
Okay. Very good. Now, just for the information of all concerned, for the information of all concerned, the actual decision about whether or not to defer belongs to the Committee of Adjustment. We'll make that, that call. We do have a request from the applicant to do so, but we also have various speakers registered and standing by to speak to the application today in opposition. So what I'm going to do now is to briefly canvas those speakers standing by, and I'm going to be asking them this one question. And that is whether they would be agreeable or be in favor of allowing the application to be deferred in order to allow the opportunity for consultation with the agent, trying to make substantial change to the application in such a way as to get to a point where they could support it. So that's my question. So let's not get into the detail of the, of the actual application, just your, your willingness or lack thereof to see it deferred. We don't have to defer it. We could go ahead and hear the application today. So let's go to the first speaker then who's standing by. State your name, please, and join us.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Mullin, M-U-L-L-I-N, initial K, and I'm counsel for Janice Mandell, the owner of one-seventy-five Chaplain Crescent.
Yes.
Ms. Mandell does consent to the deferral. I confirm that I spoke with Ms. Evangelista earlier this week, and my client is interested in working with the applicant to see if her concerns can be addressed.
Thank you very much for that. Let's go on to the next speaker standing by. Join us, please, by stating your name.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The other people registered in opposition have left the room.
So there's just, just the one speaker in opposition?
Yes.
Okay. Who has indicated a willingness to see deferral. Okay, the decision is, however, that, that of the panels. So, panel, we have a request to defer. One speaker standing by in opposition is agreeable to the, you know, that concept, but the decision is yours, so I look to panel members for a motion with respect to this request to defer. Mr. Solomon, go ahead. Mr. Solomon, you are muted.
Sorry, let's try again. I'm going to move approval of the request for a deferral, and that would give an opportunity for the applicant to meet with the adjacent neighbors to see what revisions can be made.
Is there a second? It is seconded, Ms. Hayes. So moved and seconded to defer. Those in favor, please show hands. And that's unanimous vote, which carries that motion, and the application is so deferred to the next available date. We move along to item number twelve, four-eleven Beresford Avenue. On four-eleven Beresford, before us are submitted materials, arborist report dating to December. There is correspondence both in support and in opposition. Eleven form letters in support from three-thirty-nine, three-six-five, three-seven-three, three-seven-four, three-seven-nine, three-eight-one, three-eight-three, three-eight-four, three-nine-four, four-fourteen, and four-thirty-one Beresford. In opposition, there is correspondence from four-ten Beresford, four-seventeen, four-twenty-five, four-thirteen, and four-fifteen Beresford. And there is a forty-one signature petition in opposition, signed by the owners and occupants of ten addresses on Beresford Avenue, four on Arda, one from six-sixty Annette, all received On this application, we'll ask the agent now to join us by stating your name.
Hello, my name is Daniel Dobrogansky, and I'm the homeowner and applicant of four-eleven Beresford.
Very good. You'll have five minutes, starting now, to present your application to the panel. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Committee Chair and fellow committee members. I stated, my name is Daniel, and I'm the applicant and homeowner of four-eleven Beresford Avenue. I'm able to provide a quick presentation if the committee desires, but I'm assuming since there's objections, then we're going to go proceed with the, with the presentation.
Go ahead.
The proposed application is to completely renovate the current two-story house by extending the current house footprint by two-point-one meters to the front, four-point-eight meters to the rear, adding a partial third-floor story to the current footprint, adding a front and rear balcony, and including a rear deck, front stairs, and canopy. The proposed variances are outlined in the supporting presentation to committee members, and I would like to review them one by one. The proposed building height is compatible with surrounding neighborhood, with other houses exceeding ten meters in height, and more specifically, recent approvals of Beresford Avenue. Our minor variance request is only fourteen centimeters above the current bylaw, which is about one-point-four percent. Visual impacts are mitigated by a considerate design with a third-story addition being set back in the front and rear. The main front and rear walls are limited to seven-point-seven-five meters, and sidewalls are nine-point-eight-nine. The main front and rear walls are limited to 7.75 meters, and sidewalls are 9.89, limited to the center of the proposed house, again, to mitigate the visual impacts en massing from the street and rear of the property. The proposed side yard setback on the south side of the house is for the proposed front and rear main and second-floor additions that is built in line with an existing sidewall. This request is to bring the addition in line with existing dwelling, to simplify construction, and provide modest interior room sizes and floorplan configurations. While designing, our goal is always to keep the design and size compatible with precedents set by similar houses on Beresford, and assuring our floor space index is kept under 1, even though various approvals of 1 to 1.25 FSI have already been approved in the neighborhood. We're increasing the soft landscaping in the front of the property from the current 2.8 square meters, which is about 8%, to 9 square meters, which is 26%, basically at 220% increase to current layout. However, we are still sure on that 75% requirement based on the driveway and just the way the houses are located between 411 and 413. We've been working very closely with our arborists and urban forestry to mitigate the injury to the trees in adjacent park on the south side of the property. We went through various design changes to ensure our impact is mitigated to the rear trees, and this is shown in our foundation layout to ensure our impact, the tree root system, is at a minimum. Careful consideration has been given in our design process, and the request we leave in our minor variance application, we feel, is minor. The building fits an ever-evolving and dynamic neighborhood of Blue Rose Village, keeping with similar approvals and surrounding bill forms. We spent considerable time to ensure our design does not set any precedence in the neighborhood, and our minor variance requests are below recent approvals on Beresford Avenue and adjacent streets. I'd like to conclude and respectfully request the committee members to approve our minor variance application, and this is also supported by 11 reference letters that we received just south of Arda and north of Kalback for our application. Thank you for your time, and if anyone has any questions, I will answer them to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Panel, any questions for the applicant at this stage? Let's move on then to the speakers that are standing by.
Lisa, you've been unmuted.
Hello, members of the committee. My name is Lisa Moore. I'm the next-door neighbor at 413 Beresford, directly north of 411 Beresford Avenue. We have lived here for over 30 years. I do agree that 411 Beresford needs to be renovated, but I do not support the application to 411 Beresford Avenue as a minor variance. I sent my letter of objection March 21st, so please refer to the details in that letter, as well as I emailed three different petitions from the neighbors opposing the minor variance applications. I'm not familiar with construction or the city bylaws, but reading the hearing notice, it seems like this house will take up most of the existing property, taking away most of the existing green space. The houses that are south or north of the park, they're much smaller properties than they are north, which, yes, there are bigger houses going up north of Beresford. I don't think the rear addition from .6 meters to .97 meters constitutes as a minor variance. Also, it does not respect the scale of the area. My backyard faces the large church on Runnymede, which is directly east of my property, which is a giant wall in my backyard. This... If this house is built, I will be surrounded by walls, not only east of me, but as well as south, which I know I will no longer be able to see the trees in the park. The proposed rear addition seems like it will impact the trees in the park. These should be protected as a priority over new development. The raised deck will be directly looking into my backyard. Why do they need a raised deck as well as a balcony in the backyard? I'm okay with the balcony in the front of the house, but do they really need two balconies and a deck that will take away my outdoor space pleasure that I've enjoyed for over 30 years? Also, the extension of the property out front is directly over top of their current parking pad. With two cars, where will they park? This is very limited park... There's very limited parking on my street. My worry is they will continue to park in our shared driveway. Regarding variance number two, from .9 meters to 35, .35 meter south side lot, line lot, I don't think it's appropriate to approve a building closer to the lot line of the park than what is provided in the existing zoning. Regarding variance three, from 75% to 26%, the amount of soft landscape front yard should be closer to 75% in order to help with the greening of the area. I ask that you review all the letters from the neighbors and consider refusing this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Panel members, any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Moderator, next speaker, please.
Christine, you've been unmuted.
Oh, sorry. I'm just going to concur with a lot of what Lisa said. My comments would basically mirror her comments, other than to express why...
Christine, we're having a bit of an echo here, so if you could try to maybe... If you're listening through different devices, if you can try to mute one of the two.
30 by 75 feet, and I'm surrounded on three sides by properties of similar size to 411. As per Lisa's comments, the petitioner's precedent-setting properties that he's pointing to are on lots south of us, which are 160-foot-deep lots. They're quite substantially large for this neighborhood, in fact, for Blue Rose Village as a whole. I'm concerned that this precedent will be set, and when those houses around me change hands, we could see similar development go in, and my house will be overwhelmed by three-story houses with virtually no yards and balconies overlooking me. So, other than that, I support what Lisa said. I think this is not a minor variance situation. The intensification of the house covering more than... 72% more than it's allowed to cover, which is what the numbers state, and reducing the soft landscape by 66% of what it's supposed to be, and further increasing the height of the sod on the street by 32% and removing the parking... The pad parking and putting more burden on the street, and also removing the soft landscaping and forcing more water into the storm sewers. I think that sort of sums it all up. I don't, as Lisa said, I don't disagree with these folks needing to do renovation on their home to make it more livable for them, but I just don't feel that this is the appropriate project for this particular property. Thank you very much.
Hello, Christine. Can you please state your address? Hello, Christine?
Yes?
Yes.
Please state your address.
Oh, 425 Beresford Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm seven doors north of the proposed building site.
Okay, let's ask the panel. Panel, any questions here for the speaker? Okay. Thank you. We'll go on. I believe there's another speaker standing by.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, the other speaker has left, and I think he was listed in support.
Very good, okay. All right, then, in that case, we'll return to the agent, who will have a chance to speak to the issues raised by these two speakers in rebuttal.
Hi, yeah, so I can respond to a few things that were raised by Lisa and by our neighbor on 425 Beresford. So we are not decreasing the soft landscaping in the front. We're actually increasing it because we're eliminating the path right now that we have that goes from our front door to the park. The reason why everyone is a little confused about that value is because the first, I think, seven or eight feet of the property line, a lot of neighbors don't know this, is actually owned by the city. So even though we're increasing fully, we're actually going from the current... Almost, it's a zero. It's... Literally, I just counted a few of the soft landscaping we have from the house and at the side. We basically have no paving. It's basically zero right now. We're actually... We're going to 9 square meters. And the reason why that is, is because the first few feet of the property is actually city-owned. And we've already been talking with Urban Forestry. There's a little tree there that's... It's in rough shape, and they already gave us instruction how to protect that tree and what to do to basically remove the... Basically, the interlock and replace it with soft landscaping. So even though it looks like we are reducing it, we're actually are increasing the soft landscape because we're eliminating fully the footpath that goes from the front door and basically around the fence so you can go into the park. So that's one item. If you actually look at the survey, you can actually see on the survey that basically we don't have... Like, you see the little... It's literally just the little tip of that circle is basically on the property line. Everything else is basically paved all around, sides, right to the fence. So that's one thing. And another thing with regards to the petition that was signed, and I noticed there's some names, no addresses, and it was signed by various people, it was very deceiving and very inaccurate of what was stated on the petition. It didn't actually use the zoning notice values of what our values were. They're just using generic... And basically, three of the four statements were actually incorrect when you actually analyze what the zoning notice specified and what the actual values are. Our house is not 1,000 square feet more than allowed. It's actually only 900 based on FSI, and our FSI is only under 1. We are not reducing our front yard green space by 66%. That looks such a negative connotation. We're actually increasing it by 220%. The 32% value is correct because our sidewalls are 9.89 meters and over the 7 and 1/2 meter allowed. But again, we try to limit those walls on the current footprint of the house, so they're basically in the middle center line of the house, so none of the front or the rear will be affected by this wall. And we... And increase the maximum allowable height of the building to accommodate a full three-story. Again, that's an incorrect statement because we're doing a partial three-story addition. The third-story addition is actually on the current footprint of the house, which is 26 by 20 feet. Again, we want to make sure that we're not overbuilding. We want to keep our FSI under 1. We went through a lot of houses in the neighborhood. We actually went through a lot of houses in the last two years before we bought this house, because initially, our plan was to find a finished house that I can move in with my family, because our daughter was starting grade one last September, but we just couldn't find a house that basically met all of our criteria, and we basically settled with this one and knew eventually we would have to renovate. So we took a lot of these things into consideration. Also, the size. Initially, the house was only two stories. We went further to the back, to the base... To the rear setback. But again, after talking to Urban Forestry and the way the trees are located, we decided to make the house shorter, reduce the foundation so we can avoid root systems, so we can completely reduce... And not completely reduce, but minimize the roots as much as we could. So we do have various communication with Urban Forestry. We have an exploratory excavation plan for April to basically see how the roots look close to the new foundation, which is extended, but literally offset from the main wall to make sure that we're not touching the roots. And by making the house shorter, by going up in the middle, we're way below the limitations of the rear setbacks, and we're also abiding by the front setbacks as well. So we took a lot of considerable considerations to design our house that doesn't set a precedent for the neighborhood, but at the same time meets all of our criteria, because we're planning to live in for the next 15 years until our kids finish high school at a minimum. My wife now works from home, so one of the reasons why we did that third floor is because...
I'll ask for your final comments now, please.
It's because, you know, how the work dynamics is changing, and we basically need a home office that we can work from home. Anyway, so that kind of completes my rebuttal on the issues raised by an objection to our...
Thank you very much. Let's see if panel members have any questions to put to you directly. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
I'd like to just... If you could just summarize the FSI being requested and whether that's prevalent in the immediate neighborhood as well as three-story?
Yes, our FSI is currently a .97 that we're requesting.
No, yes, but does that... Is that... Is that characteristic of the neighborhood?
Yes, if you go to our cover letter that we submitted... And at the... Basically, on Appendix A, I kind of summarized a lot of the houses that have just been built on Beresford. I didn't even go down all the other adjacent and parallel streets. And there's various approvals already complete. Just recently, 22 Beresford was approved, and there's various FSI over 1 that were approved. And when we were doing our design, we wanted to make sure that we're below 1. So again, we're not setting any precedent for the neighborhood. So if you go to the cover letter, there is a little chart and overview of houses that have already been built on Beresford or renovated on Beresford, a summary of FSI's.
Can you tell us when the cover letter was submitted, so we can...
I don't see it.
Because we can't seem to find it.
I don't see it.
It's actually... It is on the website. You go in the Committee of Adjustment and you click 411 Beresford. It's in the top four.
We'll give staff a moment to see if we can pull that up.
I just have the same question, but in a different way. When you put down .97 times in your site plan, is that your own calculation, including the basement floor area?
So, it does include the basement, no? Because the basement is below the grade.
Okay, so all of that 97 goes up above grade?
If I can share my screen, I can also show you the cover letter that we submitted.
Is this it? Is that it?
That's correct. Yes, the previous papers are just houses like from Beresford, north and south of us. Some are just within a few hundred meters of us.
Yes, could you leave it on that... On that... Yeah, leave it there, please.
Thank you.
Any further questions, panel? If there are none, then it's time to take the application into committee for a motion, unless any of the panel members would like to make a comment in advance of that. Ms. Hayes, go ahead, please.
Hey, this one is a bit of a challenge, because the numbers in and of themselves, some seem quite large. Having said that, however, I think that the design of the building and the setbacks at the front and the rear of the third floor, and the massing, and the fact that there's no length or depth variances with respect to this matter, the front yard landscaping is not a different circumstance than what currently exists, and we've heard that it's an improvement. I can support this application.
Further comments by anyone? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah, I did have some concerns with the overall FSI, just because it was hard to relate to the rest of the street to see whether it fits in. I think if we do approve this, I would like to add conditions that it be tied to the site plan and elevation drawings, which clearly show that the third floor is set back from the front and at the rear. And also, there is a third-floor rear balcony, and at a condition that the... There'd be privacy screening of minimum 1.5 meter on the north and south sides, I believe, of that third-story rear balcony.
Doug, listen. If you'd like to go ahead with that motion, go ahead, please.
I mean, what I was just saying, does the screening need to be on the south side because that's the side that goes to the park?
That's correct. So let's just do it on the one side, which is the north side, then? Is that right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So, yeah, I would move approval of the variances subject to conditions that it be tied to the site plan and elevation drawings, and that the... There'd be 1.5-meter-high privacy screening on the north side of the third story... on the north side of the third-story rear balcony.
Thank you. There is a second to that, and that is seconded by Ms. Hayes. So it is moved and seconded to approve with those conditions. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And the vote is unanimous to carry the motion. So the application is so approved. Thank you, panel. We move on to number 13. 102 Donlands Avenue. Before us are submitted materials. There's a revised site plan, floor plans and elevations from March 24. There's a zoning notice from the zoning examiner, Toronto Building, dated March 24. Cover letter from the applicants from December. And presentation materials from the applicants from March. And in comment, we have email correspondence from community planning. So at this stage, we shall have the agent join us, please, by stating your name.
Andrew, you've been unmuted. Maybe you can try to unmute yourself on your own device.
Hi, can you hear me?
We do hear you.
You hear me?
We hear you. State your name, please.
Okay, great. Hi, it's Andrew Peel, applicant and co-owner of 102 Donlands Avenue.
Very good. Okay.
Chair, could I just ask one question?
Sure.
When they start, just in terms of having reviewed the material, am I correct that you are revising variance number three to be 1.23 FSI?
Correct.
And is there, do you have the square meters for that?
Yes, the floor area is, revised floor is 157.6 square meters.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that before we started. Thank you.
Well, we're not going to be, would panel members like a presentation on this? Anybody like a presentation? Mr. Solomon, yes, would you?
I did have questions.
Go ahead.
If the applicant can explain the FSI that's being proposed and it seems quite high and so how, why is it at 1, I think it's now 1.32, I believe? And how does that fit with the area?
Sure, if you can bring up the presentation to, I think it's slide 11. And correction, the FSI revised is 1.23.
Just let me catch that, it's no longer 1.62?
No, it's 1.23.
1.23.
So I believe slide 11 is, as long as the numbering hasn't changed, should be it there. Yeah, there you go. Okay, so a key thing, so I did have a presentation, but it seems like I won't have an opportunity to go through it. We are proposing to retrofit this building to the pastmost building standard, which requires substantial amounts of insulation. And so we will be, we're proposing to add exterior insulation of a substantial thickness. And you can see I've highlighted in yellow or orange the amount of insulation we're putting around the building. And I've done this calculation to show if we didn't add this insulation, which is the usual thing to do, not to insulate the walls, we would have an FSI of 1.10. So our FSI is actually, 12% of it is due to this exterior insulation. And naturally, we're, you know, there's key benefits to insulating it. You know, it really drives down the carbon emissions in alliance with the city policies around the, you know, 2040 by zero, zero carbon by 2040 target. So I think we're, the way that things are, the FSI is accounted for, you know, it kind of penalizes you for doing the right thing by adding insulation.
Okay, let's, just while we're on FSI...
My question with the FSI is, what have you done to reduce the FSI from 1.6 down to 1.23? Like, what has changed?
If you go up to a couple of slides, there was a mistake in the original drawings that we had proposed to lower the basement because we are, we're adding a suite down there. And so we wanted to ensure sufficient height. And in order to do that, we need to lower the slab. And by lowering the slab, that puts, that happens to also put the basement at a lower level that it can be excluded from the FSI calculation. And that's been confirmed in the revised zoning certificate.
So the FSI goes down because the basement is no longer included? It was included in the 1.62?
Yes, by mistake because of the error in the basement level shown on the original drawings.
Okay.
And so how much actual new GFA is being proposed, is being added?
Sure, if you go to slide 13, I believe it is.
13, please.
Here's, oh, no, sorry, 12. I missed the number there. Okay, so here's the existing, which is in the third column there, showing the FSI at 0.87. Oh, no, that excludes the attic. So there is actually an attic that is pitched front and back and it actually extends almost halfway to the back of the house. Except for by definition of FSI, how you calculate it, we can't really include it. It's not included in the FSI. So it's actually built space there, but we, by the calculations, we have to exclude it. And then we had originally, well, in our initial design, we submitted for preliminary project review. Our FSI was 1.388 and that included a front and back extension. Based on that feedback from the city, we actually revised the design substantially. And we've actually removed the back mudroom. So in the back, we're actually getting more backyard. And we're pushing, it's only the third-floor extension that is now being extended to the back, the rear wall, the second story, to align with the second-story rear wall. That's only where the space is being created.
Let me ask you a question. The proposal is for a multi-suite rental. Specifically, how many units will the, would the result, resulting proposal involve?
There are three suites. It would be a basement unit, a ground floor unit, and then upper two-story unit.
Thank you. Okay, and I know you did, go ahead.
There was an email from the planning department speaking with respect to the initial FSI. Have you received any further comment from them with the adjustment? And also, does, can you point to any similar densities in the immediate neighbor area?
Sure, yes. My last communication from the city indicated that they would recommend not to approve the application. There is on slide 16, if we could bring that up. I've given three examples of recently approved applications in the neighborhood that collectively speak to all of the variances we're applying for. And the first one, 92, speaks to that it was actually recently approved for three suites. And so that's been approved, so there's precedence in the neighborhood there. 84 Muriel.
What's the FSI, though, on it? What's the FSI of that one on Donlands?
That one, I didn't record. That would probably, guessing under one. And then on 84 Muriel, this is actually new construction. They've put in two side-by-side semis. The FSI on each read is 1.34, so substantially larger.
Thank you.
And I know you have taken quite some care here with respect to low carbon. If you wanted to make a couple of comments about your initiative in that direction, go ahead, please.
Sure, yeah, there's opportunities. Basically, I mean, I don't know if you want to bring up the presentation, but I have statistics from City of Toronto showing the greenhouse gas emissions from 2019, showing that 57% of those are attributed to buildings. And naturally, our existing stock, which is poorly insulated, would be a big, you know, big portion of that relative to new construction. And so there's a clear policy and a clear drive and clear need to substantially retrofit buildings in a way that achieves the city's targets. And so, you know, we need to add substantial amounts of insulation, add a substantial cost. So we're willing as homeowners to bear this cost. There are very few incentives that can actually support this. And yeah, as I've gone over the impact on the FSI.
Very good. All right, then. Any further questions, panel, for this applicant? I am hearing none. Let us then take the application into committee for a motion. Any comments first from anyone with respect to the application? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I still have concerns with the overall FSI that's being proposed. I don't believe it fits with the character of the area. I haven't seen enough evidence to indicate that that proposed FSI is something that is replicated, you know, in more than just a couple of cases.
Further thoughts? Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Although I applaud the efforts here and I think the design has tried to be as sympathetic as possible to the area, I think it is too much for, in the context of the lot and being a semi. So I can't support it in its current form.
Right. As do I. I, you know, the low-carbon, the low-carbon initiative is very good, but if it's overbuilt, it's, it is still an issue. And my sense is that it does represent overbuild. Any other comment?
I don't have any further comment, yes. The height and the FSI is at the back of the height and the FSI is pretty huge.
Very good. I'll look to panel for a motion in that case. Mr. Solomon, please proceed.
So I would move refusal of the variances that are requested as amended.
Thank you. Second to that motion, it is seconded. So moved and seconded to refuse the application as amended. Those in favor, show of hands, please. That motion is unanimous, the motion is carried. And the application as amended is refused. Panel moves on to item number 14. Which is 98 Dunlow. And on 98 Dunlow Road, panel has before us materials submitted. It's a cover letter from the agent, March 23. There's an arborist report from December. There's comment from transportation and from urban forestry. In support, there are three form letters signed by owners or occupants of 96100 Dunlow and 17 Brownside. So with that, we shall ask the agent for 98 Dunlow to join us, please, by stating your name.
Good afternoon, my name is Sean Galbraith. I'm a planner here on behalf of the application.
Thank you very much. Okay. Panel members, any questions for the agent? Any requests for a presentation? Presentation, no? I'm not hearing any requests or any questions. So in that case, we can take the application into committee for a motion, please. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
I just have one question, sir.
Yes.
With respect to the soft landscaping, is it an aesthetics or a maintenance issue that you're looking to take out the little bit around the pool and the garage?
Thank you for the question. It largely is. That area isn't growing very well because of, because of the pool. It doesn't provide much in the way of functional landscaping.
So are you...
It's largely in the existing condition, if I may.
So are you, I take it from the submissions, you're, they're planning, there's a plan to redeck around the pool and so they would...
Yeah, that's exactly correct.
Any ability to use permeable pavers when they redo, redo that?
I think there would be, provided, I'm not a, I'm not a pool guy, so I don't...
Yeah, there's certain, yeah, I don't know what the regulations are around that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think, I think if it can be, if that section can be done in permeable, I, I'm sure, I'm sure they would have no problem doing it. I'm hesitant to make it a condition just because I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Are they putting, are they going to put in any planter boxes or anything? It's pretty steer-looking.
Yes, so some additional planter boxes are going to be added and it helps offset the reduction. That, I believe, is the existing condition. And then, there we go. So planter box, two planter boxes are going to be added.
Is the space under the deck soil or hardscape? The deck...
It is, it's not soil.
So there's no drainage there?
No, there isn't.
Okay, thank you.
And that's an existing condition.
Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, can the applicant just verify, is the existing FSI 0.52 and the size of the additional GFA, is that about 40 square meters?
That's, the existing FSI is 0.52 and the addition is 0.08 FSI, well below even the average. This will be the small, the fifth smallest approved FSI in the area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hayes?
Thank you. I think that the FSI being requested is indeed minor. The height of the garage is simply a little bit at the peak and replacing the existing roof. So I don't think there's any additional impact there. The rear soft landscaping is marginal now. I can appreciate the reasons why it's being reduced. I don't think that's going to have much more additional impact. But although it can't be a condition, I would take the the submissions of the, of the applicants representative that they'll do their best to do permeable pavers where it's permitted. So I move a motion to approve the application with no conditions.
Thank you very much. It's 32nd. It is seconded, Mr. Cheng. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Unanimous vote, motion is carried, and the application is approved. Panel moves to the next item. 98 Whitehall Road. Panel moves to the next item, 98 Whitehall Road. And on 98 Whitehall, the only materials before the panel are those submitted by the applicant. Let's have the applicant join us, please, by stating your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Domingos, architect, representing the owners of 98 Whitehall.
Thank you very much. Panel members, if you'd like a presentation, we can have one. Putting questions to the, to the architect? I'm not hearing any questions or requests for presentation, so let's take the application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I think the variances are minor in nature, and I would move approval of the variances with no conditions.
Thank you. Second to that, it is seconded, Ms. Hayes. So moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands. Motion carried. The application is approved. Panel moves to number 16. 608 Clinton Street. Applicant materials are before us, plus we have a soft landscaping material from the applicant, March 23rd, and we have five form letters in support, 604, 606, 610, 612, and 624 Clinton Avenue. So let's ask the agent to join us, please, state your name.
Hello, my name is Tyler Walker, and I'm the applicant for 608 Clinton Street.
Any questions here, panel, for the, for the agent? I know, I know, I have one. I'm going to ask staff to put up drawing A004. Yeah, 004. It's, I believe it's a site plan. My question to you, agent, is going to be with respect to the rear soft landscaping. Your deficiency at 30, 30 over 50 is, is quite significant, and I'm wondering, what is restricting you to, to that 30, 30 level? You know, what specifically, and since, I know that you cite other, other properties that have deficient soft landscaping, but I want to know what, you know, we, we deal with each application on its own merits. What is preventing you from being compliant with the soft landscaping in the backyard?
Well, what we've done is essentially recreated the amount of soft landscaping that exists at this moment. The garage and the area behind the garage takes up a substantial amount of the, of the rear yard. And so, what we've done is consistent with what currently exists. To be honest, we weren't looking specifically at the number 30% and said, this is what is exactly we need. What we did is we recreated what, what is already there.
Okay, so my concern with respect to that approach is this, soft landscaping has become a real focus because of its ability to assist with stormwater management. And so, as I look at your, at your rear yard plan there, it strikes me that the proposed deck could be reduced in size, still be a good-sized deck if it was reduced by even half, and that it would substantially improve the soft landscaping percentage, probably from 30 up to 40. So, you know, the, the goal here is, here's an opportunity to, to remediate, and strikes me, the deck is too large, and the soft landscaping issue is, is hurt in the process of making it that large. So your comment on that, please?
I mean, realistically, we would be open to reducing the size of the deck. Again, we didn't, we didn't think that this would be a, a sticking point, to be honest, because it's, we're just essentially recreating the existing condition. So we would, if that would be a requirement, we would be open to it. It surprises me a little bit that it is a bit of a sticking point, only in that community planning did not bring this up. And so, this is a, a new point for me to hear.
Well, it's an opportunity now. You know, the, the focus on, on soft landscaping has sharpened. It's sharpened in the last 18 months, in fact. And to recreate a deficiency without thinking about it doesn't strike me as a, as a smart way forward, but that's just my question. Any other questions, panel, for the, for the applicant?
No, I, I think that's a good point, and so really, it's asking the applicant, what can they do in the rear yard to increase the amount of soft landscaping? I think they're showing on the rear yard a, some paved walkway area at the rear, and I, I don't know, is that counted as part of the soft landscaping or not?
It is not considered soft landscaping. It's, it's an existing walkway that we were retaining.
And so, if you were to remove that walkway and leave the deck the way you're showing it, how much of an increase in soft landscaping would that result? Would, would that bring you into compliance?
No. It would not bring us into compliance. I, I don't know the exact number, to be honest, but it isn't, you know, 20% of the rear yard. The unfortunate part is that the garage and, and the area behind the garage constitute a substantial percentage of the, of the rear yard as it exists.
Yes, and that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with here. That is the fact. So it gives you, where, where then, in that not being available, where else can we look for increased soft landscaping, so as not to create a, or continue a deficiency that doesn't need to be there?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm just pointing out that unfortunately, and, and we're open, so we could replace the path with either green space entirely or permeable pavers. Unfortunately, it just won't push us up the 20 percentage points that we would like.
But you're, you are currently, you are replacing the, the deck that's there now, so you, you're, you're not, you're rebuilding that deck.
That is correct.
So there, there is an opportunity, and I, you know, I don't know the history of the property, but that deck may not have, you know, had a permit or was, you know, the, I, I'm not arguing with you that it exists, but it's, now has to be considered as part of the overall application. And it, you know, it is, to the chair's point, it, it is quite a substantive deck, and there, I think we're just asking, is there an opportunity to still meet the needs of your client with respect to the outdoor space, because there is certainly still other space, other than the deck, that might allow you to increase the soft landscaping? I mean, would a 12-foot deck be enough versus a 17 and...
Absolutely.
Seven and a half inches. So this is, I, I guess that's what, I mean, we can, you know, we can't force you to make any adjustments. If you want us to consider it on the basis of what it is, that's, that's your call. But I think what the chair is simply asking is, given that that deck is, is not built, and it is quite a substantial size, and you're deficient and need a variance for the landscaping, is there something that you believe you could put before the committee now to improve that situation?
Absolutely. I mean, I would be happy to...
What would be, what would you be prepared to do?
Realistically, it depends on what, you know, I, if, if 12 feet would satisfy the, satisfy the committee, then we would be happy to make it 12 feet.
I can't, I can't tell you what would satisfy. I'm just saying, it's your homeowner, it's their needs. I'm not ask, I'm not telling you to adjust the application. I'm just saying, is there, do you believe you have any ability to, that would then adjust that variance? If not, we can deal with the application as it is before us. I can't tell you what would meet our approval.
Well, that's unfortunately putting me in an awkward situation. I mean, to be honest, we would be happy to amend the deck. You know, it's not a sticking point for my clients, that it has to be the dimensions that it is. And so, we would be, you know, eager, we would be happy to amend the, the deck to reduce its size.
Well, what, okay, the thought I had in mind is that we could, and the, and the panel still has the opportunity to do this, the kind of thing that we could approach as a panel would be to change that soft, rear soft landscaping deficiency and move it up from 30 to 40, for example, and we could, we could do that in our decision. Is panel of any, but if the applicant wanted to do that, the applicant could do that now. Panel members, thoughts?
I, I wouldn't feel comfortable amending a, making a decision on a variance not before us or altering that variance, but if the applicant wants to change it, that's up to them, but I'm also prepared to deal with the application as it is before us.
Yes, okay.
So may I make an amendment? Is that, is that an option?
If you're making it less onerous, yes, you can.
Sure, yes, I would happy to amend it to 40%.
Okay, that's coming from you, and you're...
Three, Mr. Chair, what does that equate to in square meters?
I'm going to let the applicant work that out. Applicant, yeah, we do need to have that figure also, then, what that would work out to in...
Okay, just one second, please. It would be 46 square meters, as opposed to the 36.7 currently proposed.
Panel members, any further questions for the applicant? So we now have a, the application is now amended to, to those numbers with respect to rear soft landscaping, at the applicant's request. So let's take the application into panel, into committee for a motion, please, unless there are further comments. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe on balance, what's being requested and with the amendment to the rear soft landscaping is indeed minor. I think what's being proposed in terms of the addition to the home is actually a smart addition and is, is, you know, no, I don't think increases the impact, and I think it is not out of character with other built forms in the neighborhood, and so I have no issue supporting that. The amendment proposed to the soft landscaping does, does, I think, improve the situation. And that being said, I think I would like to, unless my colleagues have any further comment, I would move to approve the app, approve the application as amended with no conditions.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Solomon. So moved and seconded to approve the application as amended. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And that's unanimous vote to carry the motion and to approve the application as amended. With that, panel moves along to item number 17. Item number 17 is 67 Pine Crescent. On 67 Pine, committee has before it submitted materials, a contact summary of neighboring properties from the applicant. There is support correspondence from 73 Pine, and there are eight form letters in support from owners and occupants of 49, 59, 62, 67, 68, 71, and 82 Pine. So let us have the agent join us, please, by stating your name.
Hi, my name is Mike Yoliver. I'm here representing 67 Pine Crescent, and I'm with Replacement Design, located at 917 Court Road. Good afternoon, panel.
Thank you very much. Okay. Panel members, on this application, any questions, any desire for a presentation? If there are none, we can take the application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, I'd like to move a motion to approve the requested variances. I believe they are minor in nature, and there are no conditions.
And that is seconded by Ms. Hayes. So moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Motion carried, and the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we move along to number 18, which is 106 Richview Avenue, North Lot. And on this application before us are application materials submitted by the applicant, an arborist report, presentation material from the agent, staff report from Urban Forestry, two form letters in support, 106 Richview, 325 Richview. That is from, pardon me, from 106 Richview, the South Lot. And there's opposition in the form of corporate correspondence from 102 Richview. So we shall ask the agent to join us, please, by stating your name.
Good afternoon, sir. It's Mr. Bronskill, B-R-O-N-S-K-I-L-L, first initial D for David, and just in terms of the address, sir, as I always joke, in pre-pandemic, pandemic times, it was 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400 in Toronto. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. On this application, panel, anyone care for a presentation? Ms. Hayes, do you have a presentation?
No, I just have some questions, if...
Carry on.
Okay. So when I got to this on the agenda, I went, why does this address look familiar? Because we dealt with the other one a couple weeks ago.
And, and Ms. Hayes, if I can interrupt quickly, I was not, when I was in front of this panel last time, I'd indicated I was not retained on the North parcel. That was true. I was called about a week after.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doubting you. I just thought...
No, I just wanted to make that clear to the panel, because I had said that last time, and then famous last words, here I am.
Yeah, here you are. Okay. Have you, given the objection letter that was submitted back in February initially with respect to the South Lot, has there been any conversations with those individuals at all with respect to this proposal? We didn't, I don't see that we got, for lack of a better word, fresh letters of objection, but has there been any outreach there at all?
I can advise you, Madam Chair, I don't know that there's been a direct conversation. The, the good... The good news is the South Lot was not appealed. And the owner of that lot, the applicant there, did have some discussions subsequent to the committee with those owners that, as you know, are to the rear in that somewhat interesting and probably unique lauding pattern.
I'm going to ask you to stop just for a moment. Staff, would you put up the site plan, please? Because it is an unusual, an unusual site plan. So let's put up the site plan so we've got it to refer to.
And at the risk of leading staff, the location map might be helpful, Mr. Chair, in terms of just understanding. Not necessarily the site plan.
Let's go for the location map, then.
Yeah, that's helpful there. So it was 102 and 104. And what's interesting is there's a driveway access from Richview that goes from the South Lot, north of 100 Richview, that accesses those homes at the rear. And you recall that there had been some concerns from those owners with the South Lot. And I'm pleased to report that the owner of the South Lot had conversations with them subsequently. And there was no appeal filed in respect of the South Lot, which I think has helped address some of the concerns. This one's a bit further north. It doesn't have the same rear-to-rear relationship there as 102 and 104. And particularly, the objection letter you've got on file from 102. It also has a driveway out to Richview and isn't adjacent to that private laneway that had been part of the issues raised before you when we were here last time. So in some respects, this is, it is a bit of a cleaner lot, if I can say it that way, in terms of the relationships that it has to 102 and 104.
If you could just, what is the depth and length at grade? Variances are really related to the basement level, am I correct, with respect to the length and depth? And that at grade, do you comply?
At grade, I'm just pulling up through, Mr. Chair, from the front of the garage to the rear wall is 16.99 meters. But there is a projecting breakfast nook of about 2.9 meters. So at grade, it is a little bit more. It would be, if I just do my math, 19.95 meters to the back of that one-story breakfast nook. And then when you come up at the second floor, it's 16.99 meters, with the exception of something I'm seeing all the time on these houses, a small projection where the bathtub would go. And then the third floor is obviously considerably smaller in terms of its length or depth. But so the numbers themselves do relate largely to some of the excavation in terms of how they're measured. Back under the outdoor room, you are correct. But I did need to point out to you that there is that breakfast nook that does bring the ground floor over the 17 meters.
So if the committee were inclined to approve this, would you have any concern about it being tied to plans?
Through, Mr. Chair, no, not at all. It's, there's no planning report here. They don't have concerns. That might be the type of condition they would recommend. As I've said to you before, on the South Lot and on any file, when we've got these length and depths below grade, it's a reasonable condition to seek on something like this, and we would not oppose it. We would accept it, in fact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Panel, further questions? In that case, we can take the application into committee for a motion, please. Ms. Hayes, Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you. I would be prepared to support the application. I don't believe the variance is being requested in the context of other built forms and other length and depth variances below grade are not unprecedented. I don't think the FSI is not troublesome to me, nor is the height. And I would be prepared to move a motion to approve the application, tying it to plans and also forestry condition number one.
Thank you. Does that motion have a second? It is seconded by Mr. Solomon. So moved and seconded to approve with those conditions. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Unanimous vote. Motion is carried. The application is so approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On item number 19, 119 Jones, the panel has before it materials submitted with the application, plus 12 form letters in support. These are signed by owners and occupants of 98 K Curzon, 102, 103, 104, 105, 110 and 11, 117, 121, 123, 125, 129 Jones, received before or on March 21. So let's have the agent here join us, please.
Hello again. My name is Mike De Olivera. I'm with Replacement Design located at 911 Devon Court Road. I'm here representing 119 Jones 7.
Thank you very much. Just stand by a moment while I check with the moderator. Moderator, we have someone shown as registered in interest. On number 19, this is not.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, that person is not in attendance.
There's not an attendance, okay. So there is no one registered to speak on this application. Panel members, questions or a presentation request? In that case, we can take the application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I believe that the variances are minor in nature. I note that the soft landscaping front and rear are existing conditions. So I'm going to move approval of the variances with no conditions.
Thank you. Second, it is seconded, Ms. Hayes. Moved and seconded, approval. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And the motion is carried unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
The application is so approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
And number 20 is the final application on this morning's agenda for 217 Bain Avenue. On this application, we have before us submission materials, revised drawings, March 17, revised zoning waiver, March 17, cover letter from the agent, March 17, planning rationale from the agent, same date, presentation materials from the applicant, March 29. Commenting reports, we have community planning and urban forestry. There is both support and opposition correspondence. In support, from 215 Bain, from 219 Bain, there's a six signature petition from owners of 211, 213, 214, 218, 221, and 223 Bain. In opposition, from 197 Bain, from 215 Bain Avenue. And that is also from Chris Trevellian. So his letter in opposition is dated March 23. His letter in support is dated March 28. In opposition, there's also correspondence from 219 Bain Avenue. Okay. Let us then have the agent join us.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Madam Chair of the committee. Can you hear me?
We do hear you. State your name, please.
My name is Vinnie Lozao. I'm the designer and owners agent for the requested minor variances.
Very good, thank you. Panel members, any requests here for presentation, any questions for the agent, Ms. Hayes?
I just wanted to confirm after reviewing the supplementary material we got yesterday that you are removing request for variance number three because you now will meet the bylaw requirements for the soft landscaping. Am I correct in my reading of that?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Panel, any other questions? Not hearing any, so we can take the application then into panel and into committee for a motion, please. Ms. Hayes, go ahead.
Thank you. With the elimination of the variance with respect to soft landscaping, the depth variance, the depth is similar to the depth of 215. The existing FSI is 69.85. So I think the variance in request with respect to FSI increase and the depth are, I believe, are minor and appropriate and are not out of character. And I would move to approve the amended application, subject to forestry condition number two.
Subject to forestry number two, very good. Second to that motion. It is seconded, Mr. Chang. Moved and seconded to approve, subject to forestry. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And that is a unanimous vote. So the motion's carried. The application is approved, subject to forestry. And with that, the panel concludes its morning agenda. And we are now at 1:30 PM. We shall resume, panel, can we resume at 2:15? How would that be with panel members? 2:15 work? Staff, are you okay with 2:15?
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, staff is okay with 2:15.
Very good. Okay, then, we are in recess then until 2:15, when we'll begin the afternoon agenda. Thank you very much, everybody.